The Tiverton Planning Board, and I'd like to begin with a roll call to establish a quorum. Christopher Shriver is not with us tonight, he has a conflict. William Gerlach.
Present.
Janice Gomes.
Present.
Richard Taylor.
Present.
Rosemary Eva.
Present.
Patricia Hilton.
Here.
V A Lopes.
Here.
Stephen Clark.
Here.
And I'm Stu Hardy, I'm the Chair of the Tiverton Planning Board. So we have, we have a quorum of eight members out of nine. And in addition, just to my left is Ashley Sweet, our interim part-time planner and administrative officer. And we don't have Nathan Michael with us tonight, our consulting engineer, but we do have a substitute whose name is.
Jim Riordan.
Thank you, Jim Riordan. And Richard Rogers is not with us tonight that I see. And to my right, Todd Romano, our legal counsel at the very under the table.
Ed is sick.
And Ed is out sick. Ed Romano, Ed Rotella, who was our land use clerk, is out. So I would like to, I would like to open this with agenda item number one, which is a, which is a public hearing on amending the comprehensive community plan. Now, the comprehensive community plan is not zoning, and it's not subdivision regulations, it's an entirely different animal altogether. And there's a little section in the comprehensive community plan, it's very important actually, called the future land use map. It's figure 5, 4, and you can find it in the land use chapter of the comprehensive plan. And what we'll be discussing tonight is making a change to that future land use map to identify areas that we think are suitable for future waterfront development. So there are some, some changes that we are proposing, but I want to underscore and emphasize that what we're talking about at this public hearing is not zoning. We're not talking about the waterfront zones, or the waterfront use tables, what is permitted in waterfront district. That's not what we're talking about. And I will be happy to call upon everybody, and I will make frequent announcements about the sign-up sheet, and so everybody will get a chance to, to speak, to ask questions, to make comments. And now I'd like, before I actually open the hearing, I'd like to ask Ashley to show us on the screen the proposed changes to the future land use map that relate to areas suitable for future waterfront development.
So on the future land use map, in the comprehensive plan, the waterfront district is represented in blue, under the, in the legend, under waterfront-related uses. So the parcels that are shown in, in blue are the parcels that would be in the waterfront zone. And the proposed changes are looking at adding some areas into the waterfront zone, and then removing certain other areas from the waterfront district, and whether that would be either in the waterfront 1, or the waterfront 2 zoning district. The waterfront 1 district is a less intense waterfront use. It is, I have it backwards. It's the waterfront 1 is the original waterfront district, which is just a parcel all the way north where the tank farm is located, and that is the more intense industrial type of waterfront district that you're accustomed to having in town. It has been slightly modified in terms of the uses that are permitted, but it retains, you know, a more industrial type of permitted use in that waterfront 1. There is only one parcel in that district, and there's only a handful, small, small number, all the way at the north, where the, the hand is circling up at the north, northern end. The waterfront 2 is an expanded waterfront district that is less industrial in nature, and more towards allowing waterfront-dependent uses that are retail, commercial in scale. So it does not, for the most part, permit industrial-style development, it is promoting smaller-scale waterfront-dependent, commercial and retail style of uses in the table. And that district is representing the rest of the parcels that are shown in blue on the map. And so there are some parcels that have been added to that district, and there are some parcels that have been removed from that district, primarily the parcels removed from the waterfront district. I'll wait for the map to catch up a little bit. There are the small residential lots that are south of the bridge, that are just on the waterfront, they're all developed with very small houses, small lots. Those have been identified as being changed to a residential use, because they are residential in nature, and a commercial or retail-style use there would be difficult or problematic because there's no, there's no space and there's no parking. So those lots are now representing their actual use as residential lots, those are represented by just right there. Those previously were waterfront lots, they're now proposed to be residential zoning. I don't know if there's anything else you would like to go over, but that's a very kind of high-level overview. There are some lots that were previously zoned, general commercial, in, in this area here. Those are being proposed to be changed to a waterfront 2, which again, is similar in style, in that it is a, a commercial or retail type of use, but it is, also allows things that are waterfront-dependent, or water-dependent. Again, there are some lots that are further south, that were previously general commercial, because of their proximity to the waterfront, have been proposed to become waterfront 2. And there, there are a lot, there are a lot of uses that are similarly allowed in the general commercial and in the waterfront 2. And also, there is a bit of an expansion of, of waterfront-dependent style, small-scale uses that are permitted in the waterfront 2, that would be realized by changing from general commercial to waterfront 2. That this is the future? You want an explanation of the future? Okay. So the, this is the future land use map changes. The future land use map is contained in the comprehensive plan. It's a required map to be contained in the plan, and it essentially is a map that designates, moving forward into the future for the span of the 20-year life of your comprehensive plan, what the anticipated or desired future uses are for the, for the town. And so the first, the, the step of the process is to make an amendment to that future land use map to designate those waterfront, those waterfront-dependent parcels that are shown in, in blue on the map.
So I would like to now open the public hearing, and I'd like to remind everybody that there is a three-minute time limit on comments. Ed was supposed to have been keeping the time clock, but Bill has generously volunteered to be the timekeeper. So I would like to call on Mr. Stephen Surzan, and after that, Bob Gaw, and after Bob Gaw, Hannah Maderas. So if the three of you could just kind of get closer to the podium, so that we don't waste time while we're waiting for people to come up to the podium. So those three, Mr. Surzan, please.
Yes. Good evening. I want to, can you hear me now?
Is the register for you, Jim?
Now, Mr. Surzan, tell us your name and your address.
F. Stephen Surzan, S C R Z A N, 1660 Main Road, Tiverton. Because of the brevity of the comments, maybe I'll make it fast, and I have a question first. If you enact this the way it is right now, or with any other changes, you're saying this is not a new ordinance, this is a preparation for an ordinance that might be done in, when? A year or two years?
That's correct. And what we're doing tonight, what we would be doing, what we would, what we may do tonight would be make a recommendation to town council.
Right, so you're moving into the 21st century, and this is what you came up with, and at that time.
So all zoning is based on the comprehensive plan?
And so.
So any zoning changes need to be based on the comprehensive plan?
Right, but you're anticipating this will happen, that, because it's something you should do every 20 years or whatever.
Yes.
So whenever, whenever they do it in a year, or 20 years, or two years, they're going to bring this out, and that's going to be their guide, and they might change that in any way they see fit, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
Well, I want to clarify a little bit on that. So when a town, when a municipality wants to make a change to its zoning in some form or another, or, or a change to its general policy in terms of land use, that you begin with the future, with the comprehensive plan.
Yeah.
So this is the change to the future land use map for the waterfront designation. The, the follow-up part of that is a zoning amendment that enacts the, that enacts this map essentially, into the zoning ordinance. And so the, the town can, can make changes to its future land use map, to the text of its comprehensive plan four times a year. And the subsequent role for the municipality after that takes place is then to follow with the zoning amendment that implements the changes to the comprehensive plan.
Got it.
Just one second, sir, because I want to make sure everyone's clear on this. What the board is discussing, discussing right now is the future land use map. Later on in, in its agenda are zoning ordinance amendments concerning the water, what's called in the future land use map, water-related areas. Those amendments will create what Ashley spoke about earlier, the waterfront 1 and the waterfront 2 zones, and it has amendments to the zoning ordinance as to what uses are permitted, how those uses are permitted. Okay?
Yeah.
All right, so, so it's not a year or two from now, it's tonight.
Okay.
The planning board will make, be making recommendations to the town council on both the future land use map, which is a public hearing, and zoning ordinances, which is a public meeting.
Got it. In that case, I want to address plat 304, and you have a couple of groupings on 304, and I want to address 164 to 170. And basically, everything you're doing, in my opinion, is just fine, with one exception that I want to bring to your attention. 163 is Standish Boatyard. 164 is the lot that I own right next to and north of Standish Boatyard, it's 300 lineal feet. And then the other is 65 up to 70, the town of Tiverton owns, then there's one house, Nancy Driggs's house is next, one more house, and then you're at Riverside Drive. All of those houses, all of those properties other than mine, number, lot number 164 are already built on. On 304, lot 164, right next to.
The hand, is that right?
Say what?
Where the hand is? Is that your lot?
I can't see for sure, I'll take your word for it. I'm sure you're close enough. It's north of a budding Standish Boatyard. Next to it is a lot or two owned by Tiverton, so Tiverton's fine with this ordinance. Then the three houses, the three lots after that are four, are already built with single-family homes, the, the homes might hang out over the water, but they're there. My lot doesn't have anything on it, and here's what I would say, and I'll end it with this. You're zoning it, you propose to zone it to single-family residential. If you go to the assessor's information in his office, you'll see it's very steep. So there's no house that can be built on the street there, there's no parking lot, there's no garage, there's no septic system, there's nothing, it's a steep hill and you go right down. So the only thing that I can see that could be used for is something that we normally welcome, marine uses. Now, this is just ifs. Part of this is how would you get there and do it? Standish Boatyard is already there, they have their buildings, they have their driveways, et cetera, et cetera. Possibly sometime, they might want to buy the 300 feet, and then at that point, they, they're all set, they don't have to, they don't have to put any driveways in, or anything that can't be done. In addition, this parcel, I own also 2.6 acres across the street. We don't know the future, but there are zoning boards that can give variances, there could be a parking lot for the marina, with tons of parking for it. And it's just something that residential, you can't build a house there, you're certainly not going to build it down the water, I don't think they allow to build them over the water the way they used to be. Someone builds a house there, the hurricane, you have a 250 deductible, and, and I don't, maybe I don't want to live next to a boatyard. Clang, 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 go the trolleys. Thank you very much.
304, 109?
Say what?
304 dash 109?
164.
No, 164.
I'm sorry, thank you.
So all of the others are fine residential, there's already residential on it, Tiverton isn't going to build anything on it, and it's just my one lot.
We understand what you're saying, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hannah Maderas will be after Mr. Gaw, and then Gregory Lash.
Hi. My name is Bob Gaw, I live at 156 Horizon Drive. I own the property of budding, it is waterfront 2, on the bottom of, I believe it's called Hicks Farm. One question I have for the board, my first question is, at one point, I looked at this map, which was very difficult to see on the, in pulling it up, but it's a little bit clearer here. Is there anything to the, to the east of Horizon Drive that, excuse me, the east of Hicks Farm, that this would be affected by? So in other words, you've got the blue section there, in going, going east, away from the water. Is, is that affected at all by any of your plans?
No.
It stays residential, as it's currently zoned.
Residential. Okay, because at one point, this, I believe this was part of something you were looking at, to change, according to what I could see on the map.
Well, so you're talking about the actual Hicks Farm property?
The actual Hicks Farm property.
So that's the one that's split in blue and orange?
Right.
So the blue portion is the portion that's being proposed
Okay.
To be in the water, in a waterfront zone. The remainder of the parcel stays as-is.
Okay, and, and how would you plan to access that property? The blue property, the waterfront 2?
There are many, there are several access points off Horizon Drive.
So you plan to be going down to?
We're not splitting the lot, sir. The Hicks property remains one lot.
The Hicks property remains one lot, so that's not on the table right now?
How they, how they access the waterfront portion isn't, isn't for debate, I don't think, it's, it's not within our purview.
Okay. Well, from what I can see on, on the map, there's only one access point to, to that blue, blue section. Is that correct? Okay.
I can pull up the GIS if you'd like.
Yeah, I would. I'm just curious if you're going to be coming down Horizon Drive, and if this is going to be, whatever the intentions are, I, I gather you're going to be discussing that later today, if there's going to be commercial property there. It appears you have retail ideas. How are all these people going to get there? Are they going to be going down Horizon Drive, are they going to be on Leepus Road, Kaufman Road?
It's all one parcel, so the zoning, the waterfront zoning designation doesn't separate the parcel, it splits the lot in terms of its, in terms of what you're allowed to use it for. So it's retained as one single parcel, and the, the access to a development is theoretical until somebody proposes something. So the town doesn't have, we don't have a, the town doesn't have a proposal for access because they don't own it, it's privately-owned parcel, so if they wanted to develop the waterfront portion of it, it, part of that, part of the proposal for development would be a review of, of access, and how they intend to get there, and likely a, a traffic study, depending on what the proposed use would be. But the, the town doesn't own it, and doesn't have a proposal for development, so to speak to access would be premature.
I don't think so, because how are you going to get there? If you're going to, if you're going to approve that as a retail area, you're going to need to get there.
So we don't approve, we don't approve development, we're approving the, what's permitted under zoning. It's up to an individual landowner to come in with a proposal for development. We can, the, the town can only set the stage in terms of what's permitted. The, that zoning does not always take into account all the unique characteristics of a property, because you can't do that parcel by parcel and, and zone that way. You zone in large areas, and, and the, it's up to the developer or the property owner to figure out how they can apply the zoning to that parcel, and then to work with the town to, to propose a development that the town feels that, that's appropriate for approval.
Okay, and you'll, you'll be bringing that up later today, the zoning, you're going to be changing, you're going to be, is that on the agenda tonight?
The zoning is, is going to be discussed later on in the agenda.
There's no, there's no pending project for that parcel.
Right, right. But the zoning would, could dictate what, what the, what the future is.
The uses on that parcel.
Right.
Broad stroke, broad stroke. But it's up to the individual landowner, the developer, to come in with a detailed plan, which would lay out all of the details, including.
Right, right.
If it gets developed.
Right, but that's, that could determine who's, who's interested in it, is, is how you zone it. You know, it could be, you know, some big commercial developer, and they could put the boathouse down there, or the, you know, the apartments like they have there. So that's, that's what my, that's what my question is, is how you plan to do that.
Mr. Gaw, I think, I think we have a question that Tricia Hilton would like to ask you.
I just want to point out that if that stayed all, the, the access to that would be the same, if it stayed all residential, and a residential developer came in and decided to build 100 townhomes, or what, it, it would have the same access issues. We don't have control over that. However it gets developed, there are multiple access points to that property, however it gets developed, you know, is, whether it's residential or commercial, the access points are going to come from someplace. The other thing I will say about this property, and this is the worst-kept secret in all of Tiverton, is that many of you have heard that the Tiverton Land Trust and the Tiverton Open Space Commission have been working very, very diligently with the family that owns that parcel. They've had lots and lots of discussions recently, it is everyone's most fervent hope in town that those discussions come to fruition, in which case, whatever agreement comes forward that some, either some or all of that property will be preserved with a conservation easement going forward in perpetuity, in which case, whatever portion has a conservation easement on it will have no development whatsoever, other than like passive recreation. So it, the, the hope is that, that that blue, and that both the blue and the brown for residential will, will go away, and I know the Open Space Commission and the Land Trust are, are working very hard, very diligently with the family, to try and make that happen for all of us.
That's not something involved in this committee?
It, the Tiverton Open Space Commission has the lead on that. You're welcome to contact them, they're a town board, working in partnership with the Tiverton Land Trust.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gaw. The next one is Hannah Maderas, and after that, Gregory Lash.
Hi. I'm going to try to keep this as quick as possible and clear. I'm a bit confused, and I would like some clarification. I have been renting for several months now, it would be on Main Road near Coastal Roasters, it's 1761. It's been a building that's been owned by a man named Jim Stanek for decades now, he's not even sure what the current zoning is, he thought it was general commercial. I'm trying to open up a personal services-type business, and I was told, I've talked to Joan Cabot, Ed Rotella, John Hoyle, for months now. What is the zoning plan for that address in particular, and are personal services going to be allowed? There's a hair salon two doors down from me, currently, so.
Are you on the waterside?
Yeah.
So the.
They, they know the address, I've been talking to them for months now, and they've been like, yeah, totally, you can do that, just, and I've been showing up at these meetings, being very confused when the zoning stuff is just taking longer and longer.
Well, assuming the zoning amendment goes through, personal services would be allowed there.
It would be? Okay, and that would be happening today, you're saying, right?
Well, no, because we're not the final, the, the town council is the final decision.
Yeah, yeah, so it would be going to town council, a decision after this.
We're only advisory to the town council.
Okay, so it would be permitted.
But later on in the meeting, we will, we will be discussing that, and making a decision for a recommendation to town council.
Okay. Do you think that recommendation would be going to a town council meeting before 2025?
Oh, yes.
Yes? Okay, perfect.
We're hoping, we're hoping so.
All right, thank you, I appreciate it. This process for me, as a 34-year-old woman, like, young in this area, I'm from Little Compton, it has been so confusing, and I'm trying my best, and a lot of businesses down there, when they heard that I wanted to start something, told me, pull the blinds, do it anyway, because it's easier than working with the town of Tiverton, so I've been trying really, I'm not trying to like, you know, say anything bad, but I talked to several attorneys too, because I was going to do the, thank you, the, I was trying to look through the variance process, three attorneys in the area told me they wanted nothing to do with it, even though I was obviously offering to pay them.
Thank, thank, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, Hannah.
Call Ashley, we'll figure this out for you.
Hey, Ashley, I appreciate that.
So Gregory Lash is next. Mr. Lash, is Mr. Lash here?
Lach.
So you're, you're.
Good evening, I'm Gregory Lach.
Have you, ma'am, have you signed up? Have you signed the sign-up sheet?
I'm sorry, I came in late. Was I supposed to say something?
I'm going to bring it back to you. I'm going to bring it to you, and I'll bring it back to him.
Is there another sheet difference?
Okay, Mr. Gregory Lach, you've got the floor.
So good evening again, I'm Gregory Lach, owner of Lach Investments, property on 2354 Main Road, plat 310, lot 154. I'm here to just object to them stripping my general commercial zoning going to waterfront 2, just not in favor, it reduces my lot coverage from 50% to 25%, also my setbacks. Years ago, in 2010, I was served as assistant assist, operating on a residential property for both my excavation company and my oil company, and residential land on Sepulveda. I took the high road, I bought general commercial property to become legit, and I just feel now it's, even it's going to hinder what I want to do in the future, propose to build up, if I want to build another building, it limits the size for, whether it's my oil trucks, my excavation equipment. Here I am.
Okay, and you're, you're very near the intersection of Main and Golden Marsh.
Yep, right in the bottom, and I just don't know how you guys just picked out a few lots, and there's nothing across the street that's waterfront, just our two down there.
Okay, well, thank, thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
And I'd like to call on Jamie French. And while Jamie is coming up, the next one would be Mr. Holland.
Hi. I have several, I have lots of comments, but one is, why are you making these changes? It's, it's not mandatory, it's by choice. Second is, like, why, there weren't, the notices did not encompass everyone, people who received a notice last time did not receive a notice this time, and were told that they didn't need to receive one. I also wondered if the people in Fall River received them, that are within the limits of the 200 feet.
Well, hold on right there for a minute, Jamie, there's no 200-foot requirement. This, the only notice that was required was for the future land use amendment, that's a very limited notice that's required, we have, we have met that, that notice requirement, which did not include a 200-foot radius. For the zoning, no.
The state law shows that you have to have, and a butter is supposed to be notified for when you're changing zoning, which is in zoning, you're changing the future land use map.
Future land use map amendments are different than zoning ordinance amendments. The zoning ordinance amendment, which will be a public hearing before the town council, will require a butter notice.
But you're doing that after the meeting tonight, and it's automatic?
No, no.
No, no. The planning board will be considering zoning ordinance amendments and making a recommendation to the town council. That's a public meeting only. That is not a public hearing on the zoning ordinance amendments. The only public hearing before the planning board is the future land use map for which appropriate notice was given.
And will you be sending out notices with them receiving them 14 days in advance?
They are to be sent.
As opposed to sending them out on the 15th day, hoping that someone gets it more than, I mean, the notices this time went out 15 days in advance, which gave people six or seven days, because some people didn't receive it for a whole week after it was mailed. But the law states it's supposed to be received in 14 days prior.
It says sent 14 days prior.
It says delivered, it doesn't say, it says it was mailed, mailed to, and I called the state up and they said that is in hand of the person, not, not being mailed, but in hand.
Members of the planning board, I will advise you that the notice for the future land use map amendment hearing this evening was appropriate. I have reviewed the mailing list and the mailing labels sent by Mr. Rotella.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, the current waterfront has more water-related, um, uses than the, than the proposed. So why did it, why have you decided that's going to be a by right industrial use on both waterfront one and waterfront two?
Now Jamie, you're getting into zoning issues.
Well, it is, but you can't, it, it, you can't take something out of, you can't take a little thing out and make changes without telling people what the uses are for.
Let me try, let me respond to your very first comment, which is why are we even doing this? It has been decades since the town of Tiverton and the responsibilities on the planning board, since the planning board and the town as a whole have reviewed, uh, zoning to update it. Now, a lot of things have happened since the last major overhaul, which was like 2001. So we thought that not only is it timely to completely, um, completely review all of our zoning, everything, um, and, uh, update it. 20 years, 23 years later, um, that's why we're doing it. And to be more specific about waterfront, um, a, a number of us on the planning board feel, and, and we don't know how town council feels, but we feel that, um, the waterfront has been an underutilized resource. Um, and we would like to see, uh, more quality businesses, um, uh, be able to, uh, to locate on waterfront. Um, and, and our model for that would be something like Water Street in Warren or Fame Street in Bristol.
And moving.
So we're talking about quality businesses with design standards. So people can't put up metal warehouses or cinder block buildings. So that's, that, that is the basic motivation.
But then why are you, then why are you proposing the by right use of industry, industrial?
Which specific use, Ms. French, are you speaking to?
On section, on the use table, section 13.
Yes.
It says industrial uses.
And there's one.
And it says permitted in one and two, that is on the paperwork that was on, uh, that was sent to me by Ed.
Ed, I'm not gonna go through everything.
And, and it was also in the paperwork that was in the amendments to the, that was, that was sent to the town council meeting that was canceled. It said in that there is a permitted by right industrial use of waterfront one and waterfront two. And that includes manufacturing, storing, processing, and fabrication.
That is, that is absolutely.
And if you can talk about the right of commercial and water street and fame street and all these other places where we don't live, I can talk about industry. Another thing is why is?
No, we're gonna stop, we're gonna stop, because we're gonna set some facts here, Ms. French. First of all, that use 13A, manufacturing, storing, processing, fabricating activities in accordance with Article 13, that was permitted by special use permit in the waterfront zone prior to.
Previously.
Prior to January 1, 2024.
Yes, it was.
By special use.
But now, but now it's.
No, I'm not done.
Sorry.
The state then said that towns had to come up with specific and objective criteria for special use permits.
So we say no.
Okay, Jamie, if you don't let people finish speaking, it's really hard to get an answer. And I think you want an answer, but potentially other people in the audience would like an answer too. So you need to let people actually answer what you're saying.
Um, I, I would like to answer your question. I, I think Todd has given some really good information here. We have no intention of allowing industrial uses in waterfront two.
Then why is it on the paperwork that was submitted to the town council? It shows it in your paperwork that was submitted, that was submitted to, by Ed to me several days ago.
Yes.
And it was a paperwork that was submitted to the town council that it would be permitted by right in waterfront one and waterfront two.
But what you leave out, Ms. French, what you leave out are the very specific criteria, performance standards.
The performance standards are like, don't be too loud and, and don't, don't make it dusty.
You can disagree with that, Ms. French.
But there's no one to enforce those. We know that from the crematory. DEM said they're not coming over here to enforce those regulations.
We're just making sure that all the facts are out, that there are.
Why, it does. You can't go over 70 decibels. Well, gee whiz, you can't make a lot of dust, but there's no, there's no one to show that there's dust.
Ms. French, I think your time's up.
No, I, I just like to finish. And it's, um, I'd like to know why Grinnell's, they don't have to answer and argue with me, I'm just giving my input.
Okay, let's go back to our speaker.
No, I just want to finish. I'd like to know why Grinnell's is a parcel that is included.
We don't need to make this worse. Can we sit down?
No, I'd like to finish.
I think they're done.
No, they're not. I'd like to finish.
Their time's up, they're all done?
My time is not up.
Ms. French, I'm not, I'm not doing this. Let's go, sit down, or I'm gonna have to ask you to leave.
Wow. And how, so how come Grinnell's is not? I'd like to know why is Grinnell's part of this parcel that you are changing?
You want me to walk you out?
You're gonna have to.
All right.
Why is Grinnell's part of this parcel?
Jamie, if you'll sit down.
But why is, why do you not want to answer that question? Why is?
I will answer that question if you'll please obey the officer and let us answer that question. If, if you'll please obey the officer, I will answer that question.
If I do what?
If you'll obey the officer and will, I'll answer that question for you.
I have several other questions I'd like to ask.
I'm afraid, there are a lot of people here who have a turn.
I know.
And we've asked people to keep their comments to three minutes. You've got a lot of stuff here.
They didn't say three minutes.
They did in the beginning.
They said to keep their minutes. Can I please have my paperwork?
Are we gonna go sit down?
Yes, I'll go sit down. Can I have my paperwork?
Yes.
Again, I'd like to know about why is Grinnell's?
Then we're not gonna, we're not doing this.
I want to know why people on Bay Street are not being treated the same way as the people on Riverside Drive. Why are people on Bay Street not allowed to have their residential home?
Come on, Jamie. We're not doing this. Do you want to get arrested for disorderly? I don't really want to do that right now. Let's go. I'm asking you nicely to sit down, or you can leave.
Do these people want me to sit down?
Everybody likes to sit down.
Let's take a vote. Who wants me to sit down?
Let's go.
Why would I take a vote?
This is, this is completely out of order.
They may fall over.
Then grab your cane and walk. Let's go, outside.
So I'd like to call upon Mr. Ray Holland. Um, Trisha would like to, to, to respond, um, to one or more of the comments that Ms. French made, but then I'm gonna call upon Mr. Holland.
So.
So why don't you go right ahead?
So, 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 so a couple, so a cou-.
You know, Jamie, um, Trisha Hilton is trying to respond to you and be kind to you. Now please be quiet and listen to her.
So for those of you who are wondering why Grinnell's is not open space, if you look at the definition of, of what an open space is in a zone, those are parcels that are conserved for, um, natural habitat, agricultural purposes, um, and passive recreation, meaning they are essentially untouched. And the only thing that you can have on them are passive recreation, like maybe some walking trails. That is why Grinnell's, Fogland, the, um, Buller Marsh Skate Park, Town Farm aren't all listed as open space, because technically they don't meet the criteria, because they have active recreation and buildings on them. That doesn't mean that they're, the town's ever gonna do anything with them other than have them be recreation spaces. They just don't fit in that category because of the use. I would like to address the manufacturing thing, because I, Ms. French has been noting on Facebook, um, that we might have lithium battery, marine lithium battery production at Grinnell's. So first of all, as Todd pointed out, um, the restrictions on manufacturing, which were allowed in the waterfront zone before, were pretty limited. And what we've actually done is put more restrictions, much more restrictions than were there originally before that this, this was changed. As far as what you could actually do there, in waterfront two, which is the, the most of that zone, the building size is restricted to 10,000 square feet maximum. And in order to do that, you have to meet the parking requirements and the setback requirements and the lot coverage. So there's really hardly any place that you could ever have a building of that size, number one. Number two, if you're actually in the manufacturing business, no one's gonna pay the price for a waterfront lot and pay waterfront taxes to make widgets. I mean, when you can go and buy industrial land for, or rent in an industrial land for a whole lot less. So the type of manufacturing that you're likely, if you have any at all, that's going to end up there, is somebody who for a reason needs or wants to be by the water. So if you look, for example, we have a couple of marinas. Maybe those marinas want to extend, expand a little bit, have some extra space, and somebody wants to open up a business where they're making marine canvas, they're making dodgers and sail covers or whatever else like that. Or maybe somebody wants to make paddle boards and, you know, be able to be close to the water so that people can demo them. But there's no place, and when you look at all the, the other restrictions that we have on industrial use about noise and light and sound and smell and everything else, you know, at best you're talking about very small companies that might want to, might want to locate there. And in all likelihood, because they have to be marine businesses, they might be something that's an additional use at one of the marina sites or up by the bridge. There's not going to be any marine lithium battery manufacturing at Grinnell's Beach. I can promise you that.
So Ray Holland is our next person.
Can I just say one, one thing?
Be very brief, please.
So the question about why this is being done is, the first place you should look as to why to do something with land use is your comprehensive plan. And I just want to share with the people in the audience, when you search waterfront, it comes up 82 times in your comprehensive plan. And under the land use goals, policies, and actions, it specifies promote marine-related land uses within the non-residential zoning districts along the Tiverton waterfront. Action three, under marine and water-dependent uses, complete a comprehensive waterfront plan that evaluates long-term options for redevelopment, improved aesthetics, and increased public access from the Fall River line north to the Naniquacket Bridge in the south. That's basically what this, that, that's what this exercise has been. They did an overview of the waterfront parcels, they looked at the uses that were allowed. The first step is to make a change to the comprehensive plan, future land use map, where they have designated taking some parcels out that don't make sense to be there because they don't fit that description, and adding other parcels in because they weren't in that category previously, but very much fit the description. And in doing that assessment, have come up with a plan for two waterfront types of zoning. One, keeping the industrial located where it is currently, and then expanding what's allowed in a waterfront zone to be more in line with retail and commercial style waterfront dependent uses, and that's the creation of that waterfront two district. So when the question is asked, why are you doing this? It's because the comprehensive plan set that out as a, as a goal and an actual action for the town to take, and that's what this planning board has done, is done the action in the plan. And this is the result of that exercise.
So our next, uh, speaker is Ray Holland, followed by Colleen Stanton. Mr. Holland, would you please come up?
Mr. Holland, you've answered the questions I had, so I won't take any more of your time. Thank you.
So I'll call on Colleen Stanton.
Same thing.
Okay. Okay, is there anyone else in the audience who would like to be heard? I see a hand go up. Would you please come up to the podium? State your name and your address.
My name is Margaret Madeiras, and I live at 33 Bay Street in Tiverton. And I own with, I don't know if Michael got here.
Please, please speak into the mic.
Yeah, I'm sorry, but I'm a tenant in common with Michael Farias, and, um, he was gonna arrive, but maybe something happened. So I'll just speak for myself. Uh, we own, we own this land, and, oh, one of the things I, when I looked at the, uh, the property that we own is 101-355, 101-356, and 101-344. I don't see that in the numbers in this bottom paper, of this paper.
That's because the zoning was not being changed. The designation on the, on the future land use map was not being changed.
It's not being changed?
Correct. It's still water-related on the future land use map, and it will remain water-related use.
Okay, all right. My grandfather bought this land in 1925, March. It'll be 100 years in March. We have been paying taxes on this land all that time. The, 33 Bay Street, there's a house on it where I live, but the other, these lots are undeveloped. Now, when zoning, when you make these decisions, as you said, why isn't the people that own the land notified that there's gonna be discussion about the land? Why, why were we blindsided when we went to, um, the zoning office and we got the zoning certificates from Mr. Hoffman, who we found out after, we got, um, uh, new certificates, because that, Mr. Hoyle hadn't approved them.
Ms. Madeira.
This is in 2023.
I'm not trying to cut you off. Are you talking about when your property was re-zoned to waterfront?
Yeah, what I'm trying to say is, we, we assume, Michael and I assumed it was residential.
Okay.
It wasn't until 2023 that we decided to sell it. And at that time, we went to the zoning office and got zoning certificates. The first certificates we got said it was residential. And then we got, in August of 2023, we got new certificates from Mr. Hoyle, saying he hadn't approved what Mr. Hoffman had given us.
Okay.
When I talked to Priscilla in the office, she said in 2014, the zoning was changed.
It was actually 2001.
2001.
I have the notice that was published.
Well, why wouldn't, that's my other question. Why, why is this done? First of all, why do you decide on this land before, and you don't tell the people that you're doing this to the land? And then when the decision is made in 2001, you don't notify anybody?
Well, I, I can't speak to what happened in 2001, other than knowing that it was published in the newspaper and that.
So it's.
It's been like that for 23 years now.
It's published in the newspaper, that's how we find out?
When it was, when, because what I'm assuming in 2001, at that time, the council and solicitor recognized the change to be a general zoning district change, which would only require newspaper notice, not specific notice. All right? Specific notice is required if you, for example, came to the, to the zoning board or to the town council and asked for one of your lots to be rezoned. Then the 200-foot of butter would, would receive specific notice, mailed notice to them, not just the newspaper notice.
All right.
So when there was a general, when the entire zone was created, that's a general change only requiring general notice by the general laws.
All right.
But again, that's 2001, and we can't do anything about that now.
You can't do anything about that. This property is on Bay Street. There's a railroad track that runs on the other side of it, west. After that is the tank farm, and then there's the water. So it was hard for me to understand how it was water-related. I don't know how this can be sold. This is nowhere near the, the marina that's gonna be built on the other land. There's no access that I can see. I don't know how we, we want to sell this land.
So your recommendation?
Wanted to sell it as residential.
What, what, what is your recommendation?
My recommendation was that we wanted to sell, we've had many offers for residential. We did have one offer for a pickleball court. But everybody that goes through the zoning office is told, no, it's got to be water-related. So we're up against a stone wall.
So you're looking to rezone your land from waterfront to R30?
If, if that's, yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay.
Who is next? I believe you're, you're next. If you would come up and state your name clearly and your address.
Juanes Murphy, 2423 Main Road.
I'm Margaret Majeris. I'm here with him. The reason why we wanted to ask, the, currently, his property is being rezoned to W2, or it's being proposed that it be changed to W2. He currently rents a building on his property to an antique shop. And I'm kind of unclear as to whether that would be allowed under the W2 zoning, or would he lose the ability to rent that building to an antique shop? Or would that have to be a marine-type business that he would have to rent to or sell to?
I'm advised that it is allowed.
It would be allowed?
That would be allowed. We should probably clarify, because we keep using the word marine. There's a lot of uses. Retail, restaurants, you know, we keep using that word, but it's much more of a combination of marine uses and, you know, services and restaurants and antique shops and, you know, service businesses. So that would be an allowed use.
Okay. That's what he wanted to clarify, because he didn't want to lose the license for the antique shop, right? Okay.
At a minimum, it's a pre-existing non-conforming use.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
While we're waiting for anybody else in the audience who would like to speak on this topic, I would like to ask Todd Romano, our, our legal counsel, to just give a very brief explanation of what we will be doing later in the agenda that has to do not with the future land use map, but actually has to do with zoning, the zoning code, the use table, the criteria, the performance standards and criteria that we're going to attach to different uses, just so that you'll know that we will be discussing that later in the agenda, and you can, and you can stay for that. Listen, it's not going to be public, making public comments will not be permitted.
Comments from the board.
Comments from?
Stu?
Yes?
I'm going to suggest, since all these folks are here, maybe we close the public hearing on the future land use map and have our discussion and vote, and then move that agenda item up, because they're all here for this. And I think some people have already made the comments that they were going to make on that point anyways, rather than have everybody have to sit and wait all night.
Then I will, I will make the motion to move the agenda out of order and move.
Well, Stu, Stu, I'm going to, hold on one second. You're still on the future land use map. Let's wrap that topic up.
Right. So I would then close the public hearing on the future land use map.
Just ask once more?
Questions from the board.
Before I close it, yes, we have, we have a hand going up. Please state your name and your address.
My name is Deborah Murphy-Raposo. I am, my home address is 154 Dear Run Road in Tiverton. I'm calling about my other property at 153 Riverside Drive in Tiverton. My concern is Lot 128, the commercial building, and Lot 129. What is the waterfront, what is the zoning on those lots, and what is the proposed zoning going to be on those lots?
Do you have addresses for those? Is it, is, what are the addresses of those lots?
So one of them is, what I formally know it as is Chase Marina. And you talked about commercial buildings and, and, you know, steel buildings and all that, you know, changing. I want to know what the zoning change is going to be on that building? The parking lot that's just before it? And the other lot, which is Lot 126, which is now owned by the state? So I want to know which, what's the zoning?
Do you have a preceding?
I don't. I just have the, you know, the lot. So it's going to be, the address, my address is 153 Riverside Drive, so it's going to be those next three lots north.
North, north of the, under the little railroad bridge?
North, no, no, no. So that is my lot right there that you have up that picture?
Yep.
My property, it's going to be the next lot north. So Chase Marina, yep, so 120.
24, 25.
Yep.
Okay, just give us a second, please.
So they're currently zoned waterfront?
They're zoned waterfront right now, right? Waterfront two, right now? Or just waterfront?
There's only waterfront now.
And they would become waterfront two in the future if this amendment passes?
They would become waterfront two?
They would be in, as you said, we're, we're creating two instead of one.
Some of, some of them are not, though.
So they would be residential and no longer commercial?
This is going to stay waterfront.
One, hold on.
Let's make sure we have the right.
One, two, three. One, two, three. So lot, from Lot 125 south, which is right here. This is, that first one is 125, so that's proposed as residential. So 120, wait, 1, 2, 3, yeah. So your lot, what, 123, you said?
123, I believe, yes.
So that would be proposed as residential?
And how about the, the future lots right all next, you know, next door and going north?
North of you, up until 126. So 126, 127, 128, and then the bridge?
Yes.
Those are waterfront two.
Okay.
North, I believe, waterfront two.
North, yep.
And then 120, 1, 2, 3. So starting at 125, 125, 124, 123, those are proposed, going south, are proposed as residential.
Residential. So even that property that all that the state now owned by?
No, that's staying, because that's, that's adjacent to the bridge, that stays waterfront.
Right, but adjacent to myself is also owned by the state.
Hold on. So all the, all the properties owned by the state would, would be waterfront two?
So residential?
Nope, waterfront two.
Oh, waterfront two, okay.
Those three properties that are owned by the state after, south of the bridge?
Yes.
Are, are the three, can you go back to the? That's those three.
Right.
In blue. And then it switches to residential, where, where that string of houses are. And then it goes back to waterfront when it's not a residential house anymore in those larger lots.
So what would be able to be proposed for that waterfront property, adjacent to my
The, there's a use table that provides a variety of different uses in the waterfront two district that are, some are marine-related, some are not, some are, but they're, they're mostly like commercial, retail. But there's a, there's a, the second part of the discussion is the use table that says what's permitted in each of the zoning districts, or specifically in waterfront one and waterfront two.
It's very similar to the uses that have always been permitted in the waterfront zone. There are some that were previously specially, only permitted by special use, which are now permitted by right with performance standards, but it's still very similar to what was always allowed. There's a specific use you're concerned about, we can address that.
No, I just obviously want to know, you know, what you mean, to protect my property and know what type of commercial business is going to be proposed to go in the adjacent property, which we all know, you know, that that Chase Marina, as I know it by, you know, that the state owns, is, you know, there's a proposal of, of a lot of change happening there, you know? And I want to be privy to that information, you know?
I will say, rest assured, that, that the new waterfront changes have, how do I put this? There are more, more restrictions in terms of things like parking, or noise, or setbacks, or required buffers and screening than there were in the old waterfront zone. So we have tried to add things here where there's, you know, a confluence of residential property and waterfront property to minimize conflicts and not create parking problems, not create noise problems or light pollution problems. So it's actually more restrictive than the old waterfront zone used to be in terms of those kinds of things.
It is. You know, even with the state owning all that property now and as the state?
It's, they're going, I mean, if that's our zoning, I mean, they're going to have to comply with it.
Thank you, Mrs. Raposo.
Thank you.
I see no other hands going up, so I will take this opportunity to close the public hearing. And then I think I need to offer, consistent with Robert's Rules of Order, I need to offer a motion. And so I would like to move.
Are you going to ask for?
This is Robert's Rules of Order, so I, I make the motion. If I get a second on that, then we get, then we will have a discussion, okay? Let's do it right. So I hereby move the Tiverton Planning Board, make a positive recommendation to the Tiverton Town Council to adopt the amendment, amendments depicted on the proposed future land use map dated August 2024. Which map will be attached to this recommendation, understanding that per general, Rhode Island general laws, the amendment to the future land use map shall not become effective for the purposes of guiding state agency actions until it is approved by the state of Rhode Island pursuant to the methods stated in Rhode Island General Laws 45-22.2-1 et sec, or pursuant to any rules and regulations adopted pursuant to Rhode Island General Laws 45-22.2-1 et sec. So that's my motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
So I have a second from Rosemary. Now we can have a discussion. Did you want to say something, Rosemary?
I do, I do. I didn't. I didn't say at the last meeting, because we had so much on the agenda, and I've been concerned, and I just want to reiterate my concerns about the parcels that are south of Bogamash Road that are pre-existing non-conforming parcels. And they're rather large, and if we put them into this classification, I don't think it fits what's in the comprehensive plan under waterfront-related uses. Ashley was kind enough to state the others as coming down to Nanak Quackett Bridge. These are beyond the bridge. This is opening up some rather large areas, which could become what we don't want to see. I mean, we have to look 20 years from now and what's going to come along. And, I mean, the subcommittee worked diligently on this, but I think the board needs to think about the, if I may, the waterfront-related future land use designation includes certain non-residential and mixed-use areas along the Secconnet River, for which primarily water-dependent commercial uses are appropriate and rely on waterfront access for business. These parcels do not fit into the rely on waterfront access for business. One of them maybe, it's just storage. It doesn't have docks. The other ones are across the main road. I mean, we've seen where some of these pre-existing uses mushroom and are not enforced. People just come along and put them in. And I don't want to put anybody on a business, that's for sure. But I think that the board has to take a hard look, and the, the town council too, for what happens. They don't have any, the infrastructure down there, there's no sewerage, the septic is questionable on some areas of the town, and should be looked at hardly. But I, I think, you know, what's been done in the north will work, but that's just my concern, and I would like to take it into consideration.
Thank you, Rosemary. Would anybody else like to make any comments? Again, we're just talking about the future land use map.
Stu, I, I think it might be helpful if we can explain pre-existing non-conforming, just as a reminder for people, because I think, they think, or they may be wrong, is if you are currently, or there's currently something that is in these zones that does not match where we're going, you're still fine. It's just if that use is abandoned under these zoning rules, then that, in essence, that will change. Right? I was wondering if we could just clarify for everybody that, what that means. And I don't know if I said it appropriately, but I think that's always helpful context, that it's not a sweeping thing that's going to happen tomorrow. Nobody's properties are changing today.
So it's, people are grandfathered in under pre-existing non-conforming, I think is what we're trying to say.
They were grandfathered in, but they went for variances in many cases. Some didn't. Some were just cropped up there. So, I mean, I think we need controls, and we need to look at these things.
And do I hear any other comments? Not seeing any comments. I would like to make, I would like to call a vote then. We have a motion, a second, we've had a discussion. All of those in favor? Okay, it's?
Abstain.
Then everybody is in favor, except Rosemary, who abstains. Okay? Thank you. Now I'd like to make a motion to take the agenda out of order and move up Agenda Item 7A and 7B. And to, to number two. And then number two will become number three on the agenda. So I'm, I'm making that motion. I need a second.
Second.
Do I, is there a discussion? Seeing no discussion, all of those in favor, unanimous. So now I'd like to call on Todd to, while everybody's here, to talk about 7A and B, which would actually implement, which are, actually are recommendations to Town Council for changes to zoning. So Todd?
This is the Planning Board's public meeting, not hearing.
This is a public meeting.
On recommendations to the Town Council for zoning ordinance text amendments, amendments, as well as zoning ordinance map amendments. As you all know, we've been discussing this since January, I'll say, this year, in, in response to changes from the General Assembly. As you also know, the, the proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance map will mirror the amendments to the future land use map, however, goes further to break out the water-related uses, as we've discussed, to waterfront one and waterfront two, waterfront two zones. You've also discussed over these several months, performance standards for the uses, which are going to be permitted by right. You've also discussed the specific objective criteria for uses that will require a special use permit. Because of all these discussions, we also identified other things that had to be changed in conjunction. For example, definitions had to be updated. We had to include definitions of what the waterfront zones were. We've also taken the very necessary step of incorporating the form-based code zones, the neighborhood business, traditional main street, and pedestrian-friendly destination zones into, formally into the zoning, zoning ordinance, into the zoning district use tables, and into the dimensional table. You also have some other changes to the dimensional table to reflect changes that we've discussed with these uses. We've also updated dimensional standards to include definitions about height and how height is now calculated. One other thing you're going to do is exempt the town from its zoning ordinances for governmental functions, which is a standard provision throughout the state. It's just a clarification. Everything is, all of the changes are fairly summarized. Everything is, all of the changes are fairly summarized, in what I'll call a cover to all of your zoning ordinance amendments, so we're discussing Articles 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, and 16.
So, so is there any further discussion? This is, this comes out of our meeting, our seven, our six-hour meeting, our marathon meeting, and where we, where we discussed all of this, and agreed to all of this, we were taking informal votes. We were trying to get a consensus, so they weren't, they weren't formal votes, and that's why we're here tonight, to take a formal vote on this. But Todd put together a huge packet of all of the things that we have, we have done, that we would like to consider taking to Town Council as a recommendation. So that, that is what, that is what we are discussing right now. So again, it would be, it would be, it would be 7A and B, Todd?
Yeah.
Is that about right?
I believe so.
And, so we'll, there are things that are totally unrelated to waterfront, that we would still need to go back to, but, under 7, but, so I would...
No, these are all the amendments, aren't they?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. Correct.
Under...
It's not just waterfront, it's all of your zoning ordinance amendments, because of all the work that you had to do to create the performance standards and special use specific and objective criteria.
Okay, okay. All of it?
All of it.
All of it, okay. So we, you know, we have been discussing this for a long, long time, and we finally wrapped up a long process of updating. And so, we thought we would give Todd an opportunity to put it all on paper, give us that draft well in advance of this meeting, so that we could review it and make sure that everything is correct. I went through it, and I didn't see any issues at all. Did anybody see any issues, anything that needs to be corrected, or, or any typos?
I had one, actually.
Uh-huh.
A consistency issue.
Okay.
For mixed-use residential performance standards. We have, in the waterfront zones, total area dedicated to residential use shall not exceed 50% of the total ground floor area, and I didn't know if you wanted that to apply to all mixed uses. 37, I think, performance standards.
So, Todd, the only other zone that the zoning update committee has reviewed that for is the Form-Based Code, the Main Road zone?
Okay.
Which was, that was an affirmative, but we haven't discussed it for any other zones.
Okay, but, but to the extent it's permitted somewhere, I'm just suggesting you have it be consistent.
Right.
Yeah, I would agree with that. Does everybody agree with that?
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Okay. Okay, we can make that change.
Okay, so where presently reads, "In the waterfront zones, total floor area dedicated", I will strike, I'll strike "in the waterfront zones". It'll just start, "Total floor area dedicated to residential uses shall not exceed 50% of the total ground floor area", correct?
Right. Yes, that's what we agreed.
Ms. Elton?
I, I'm a little worried, like, just for example, take Village Commercial, where we allow it, and those are like, those are basically like, old, you know, like a Greek revival-style house, right? Which is, and the upper floor is the same amount of space as the lower floor. I'm just, I'm a little worried about the law of unintended consequences here. And so, for sure, I would say Main Road, because, I mean, the zoning, that was the zoning update committee's recommendation, and obviously, the waterfront. I don't know about the other zones.
What's the harm in keeping it as right? With waterfront?
Yeah. Aside from surface level inconsistencies.
Right. Would not apply to the Form-Based Code zones. So I can add those, if you want.
I could add those. That would be my suggestion, just because we've thought, those have been sort of, as best as you can thought through. The other ones haven't, the other zones, we haven't thought through.
Okay. So is that what the board wants? For this 50% to apply to waterfront, neighborhood business, traditional main street, pedestrian-friendly destination?
Right, right. Do you need a formal motion on that?
You do.
Okay, so I would, I would move that amendment.
Second.
Any further discussion? Any discussion? I'm hearing none. All of those in favor?
Thank you.
Okay, so, so that, that provision will well apply now, just to the Form-Based Code and to the waterfront, not to anything else. We can deal with that later on.
Just leave the general course.
Okay, is there, is there any other, does anybody else have any recommendations for any changes? If not, I'm prepared to make a rather long motion.
Well, Stu, I know it's not a public hearing, but, I mean, should we see if there's anybody who has any last questions, or any last comments they want to make about the, at least the waterfront zone, which is what I think people are here for? Does anybody?
For any, any zone, I would say. That's what's under consideration.
Or, or any of them? Anybody, any?
I just have one question. When Mr. O'Meara told me that my land was changed in 2001, and I contacted the office, and I was told to go to the meetings, because after everything was set in stone, and he would explain to me how I could use the land, what I could offer it as. So why am I here if you just told me that that's already been changed in 2001? It's not in the future land use.
In 2001, it's my understanding, the future land use and zoning ordinance maps were changed to designate your properties as water-related and waterfront zone.
In 2001?
Correct.
So that's, mine is already set in stone. It's not the future land that you're talking about now. These codes, right?
Your...
The Future Land Use map is not changing as far as your parcels are concerned. The uses may slightly change with the zoning ordinance amendments, as to what's permitted and how it's permitted in the waterfront 1 zone as proposed.
So there's amendments, even though mine was changed in 2001, there's amendments to that land, too? It's included in this future land?
The existing, the existing zoning is that there is a waterfront district. There's just one category of waterfront uses.
Okay.
The proposal that the Planning Board is talking about splits the waterfront district into two separate waterfront districts. Waterfront 1 and Waterfront 2.
You know what?
You're in Waterfront 1.
I'm in 1.
Yeah. If this zoning, if this zoning does pass by the Town Council, you would have all the uses that you have today, but you would get more. You'd actually have more, there'd be more things that you could do with that land, if this passes.
Okay, so after this meeting, Mr. Boyle told me to go to his office, so he'll be able to explain...
No.
Come see me.
Go see Ashley.
Come see you?
Yeah. Call, call the planning department, and let Ed know that you want to set up a meeting, and we'll, we'll talk. And I'll, I'll, we can go through the new zoning, should it pass, and you can, I can answer your questions.
Assuming it's passed by the Town Council.
Yes, that's what I meant. I mean, I'm happy to discuss it with you prior, if you want to just get more information, but it's up to you.
I might as well wait until it's all finished.
Yeah, yes, Bill.
Can we just recap for the public audience, what's going to take place after this meeting? We've alluded to it a couple of times in passing, but just for the record, what happens to all of this, assuming we make the positive recommendation to swing it forward?
So the process going forward is that we would make a positive recommendation to Town Council. We've already done that for the Future Land Use map, and Town Council will have to have, will have to have a, I believe they have a, I believe they have a public hearing to make any changes in the Future Land Use map. And then, by the way, that amendment goes to statewide planning, and statewide planning needs to accept it. And then it becomes officially a part of our Tiverton Comprehensive Community Plan.
It's part of your comprehensive plan as soon as you adopt it. It's, the approval of the state is separate, and not, does not affect your local adoption.
So, so that's the Future Land Use map that we've already done. What we're about to do is actually make recommendations to Town Council on zoning. And once again, Town Council will have to take this up in a public hearing with public And so you'll have an opportunity to speak before Town Council on this, if you, if you, you know, if you still have issues that you'd like to address. Did I answer that adequately, Bill? I think we're ready for a vote. So I would like to make a motion, and if, and if I get a second, then, again, we have an opportunity for a little further discussion, but then we can move on to a vote. So this is a very long motion, highly recommended.
You're gonna do two motions, Stu? One for the map, one for the ordinances?
If you would like, I will do two. My, my first motion is this, and this relates just to the map changes. I hereby move that the Tiverton Planning Board make a positive recommendation to the Tiverton Town Council to adopt the amendments depicted on the proposed zoning map dated September 2024. Which map will be attached to this recommendation? These map amendments are consistent with proposed amendments to the Future Land Use map of the Comprehensive Community Plan. Further, these amendments demonstrate a recognition and consideration of the purposes of zoning as presented in Rhode Island General Law Section 45-24-30. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Dick. Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, all of those in favor? It is, you...
No, I'm abstaining.
So it is, we have, we have seven votes, four, and one abstention, and that's Rosemary. So now, I would like to make a second motion, and this has to do with the text. So we're talking about zoning changes, but we're distinguishing between the zoning map and the text that actually describes what can happen in the, in that, in the various zones. So my motion would be this. I hereby move that the Tiverton Planning Board make a positive recommendation to the Tiverton Town Council to adopt the text amendments attached hereto, and generally described as Article 1, Introduction, Section 5, addition of a section that will exempt the town from the zoning ordinance for governmental functions. Article 2, Definitions. These amendments update the definitions to conform to recent legislative changes, and to conform with changes in the district use table. Article 3, Zoning Districts, Section 1. These amendments split the waterfront zone into two zones, and defines these two zones. In addition, the Form-Based Code zones of Traditional Main Street District, Neighborhood Business District, and Pedestrian Friendly Destination District are incorporated. Article 4, District Use Regulations, Section 1 through 13A. These are comprehensive amendments to the district use table, identifying which uses are permitted by right, by special use, or not permitted. These amendments also split the waterfront zone into two zones to recognize the difference in uses in each. The amendments further incorporate the so-called Form-Based Code District Use Table with the zones of Traditional Main Street District, Neighborhood Business District, and Pedestrian Friendly Destination District into this table. These amendments also clarify the title of uses, add uses to all zones, and eliminate uses from all zones. As to Section 15, quote-unquote, recycling center, will be added to the list of prohibited uses. Article 5, District Dimensional Regulations, Section 1, 2, and 4. These amendments also account for the division of the waterfront zone into two zones. Further, these add the dimensional regulations for the Traditional Main Street District, Neighborhood Business District, and Pedestrian Friendly Destination District zones into the dimensional table, and to the section concerning lot frontage. Moreover, these amendments clarify the intent of Section 2 to allow multiple principal uses on a single lot in the commercial, waterfront, and industrial zones. In addition, these amendments bring the definition of building height into conformity with definition in the general laws, Rhode Island General Laws, and includes diagrams to assist in the construction of the phase, of the phrase. Additionally, these amendments make adjustments for structures that are elevated off of the ground due to base flood elevation and freeboard requirements. Article 6, Other District Regulations, Section 10. These amendments provide performance criteria for multiple uses permitted by right. Article 7, Substandard Lots of Record, Section 2. This amendment recognizes that lawfully existing lots of record, existing as of June 24, 2024, do not merge as a result of the zoning map amendments adopted on June 24, 2024. And then finally, Article 16, Special Use Permits, Section 5. These amendments provide specific and objective criteria for uses which require a special use permit. These text amendments are consistent with proposed amendments to the Future Land Use map of the Comprehensive Community Plan. Further, these amendments demonstrate a recognition and consideration of the purposes of zoning as presented in Rhode Island General Law Section 45-24-30. That is my motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
And we have, and we have a second from Steve. Any further, any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all of those in favor? Okay, and eight, seven in favor, and one abstention, and that's Rosemary. Okay. Thank you very much, and I believe that concludes this part of the agenda. So this will bring us to, to, to 331 Main Road. And this is the adaptive reuse of an historic structure, historic chapel at 331 Main Road. It's in a Neighborhood Business District. There are, the proposal is to rebuild this and expand the existing building, so that it will now contain two commercial spaces on the lower level, and four residential units on the second and third level. This is the continuation of a public hearing that began way back May 7. And I see that Mr. Lycan's, the architect, and Mr. Garrity are both present. I would like to say that we have a memo from Ashley dated September 26, and one from Nathan Michael dated October 1. We, we would need to vote, if we can wrap this up tonight, we would need to vote on dimensional relief. We have a request for relief on a setback on the north side of the property, where 20 feet is required, but the applicant only has eight feet and some inches. And we also need relief on parking. The parking requires 11 spaces, and, and the applicant is requesting 10 spaces. We did have testimony on this at an earlier hearing, at an earlier hearing, so we do not need to have any further testimony on granting relief, dimensional relief under Unified Development Review. So Ashley is recommending that we do approve that, and that we also approve the minor land development prelimi- and that we also approve the Minor Land Development Preliminary Plan. We have positive findings for both of both the Unified Development Review Relief and for the Minor Land Development provided in Ashley's memo. And this is a public hearing. So I would like to invite any member of the public to who has a question or a comment to come forward now. Not seeing anybody, I will therefore, I think I see Mr. Fairhurst. I believe your name is Michael Fairhurst, and you're the abutter. Mr. Fairhurst, why don't you come up and speak into the mic? You are the abutter to the south of the property. And Mr. Fairhurst was with us at earlier meetings and was a little concerned about a public right-of-way or an easement across the property of 331 that also abuts his property. So, Mr. Fairhurst.
There had been some, has been some changes since this first, since the proposal was first fleshed out. They've modified it a little bit. As I understand, I'd like to hear just a couple of words about what those modifications amount to. And the other thing I'd like to know, is there something that defines what the minimum area of a commercial use is? Like, there used to be so many square feet to call it a dwelling. Is there any type of regulation or dimension that says how big or how small a commercial use can be? Because they will be putting two commercial uses in the little basement of that building.
All right, okay, let's take your two questions in order. So so I would like to call on Mr. Garahy to respond to your first question. What has been done to to address the issues that you raised?
Yes, Mr. Chairman of the Board, John Garahy, on behalf of the applicant. And let me just say thank you for the courtesy of the continuation. We've had several conflicts on our part. So we appreciate the ability to have this continued, and we apologize for that. But in direct response to the question, yes, there have been several changes. One of them was a recognition of that right-of-way. I'm sorry.
That's the old plan.
It's the old plan that's
That's the wrong one.
The wrong plan that's shown on it. But essentially, the right-of-way was recognized as which was adjacent to your property. There used to be a dumpster and some parking on adjacent to that. Under the new plan, there is there is nothing within that right-of-way, which is a 20-foot right-of-way on the property. It's totally cleared over there. So that that was one change. There's those parking spaces and that dumpster is now not within that right-of-way on that property. I will also say, Mr. Chairman, if I may, with respect to parking, and we did request a parking variance. But respectfully, I don't think we need that anymore. Under the Adaptive Reuse Program, only one parking space is required for each unit. That would be four. We have almost 1,000 square feet of commercial space to that question. That requires four parking spaces. So as I understand it, eight are eight parking spaces are required. We provide 10 on the site plan. So maybe, you know, if the parking variance is granted, that's fine. I do not believe we we need it because I believe we have 10 and eight is required. So that so that addresses the, I think, those those issues.
I remember that discussion, but it popped up in Ashley's memo. So I was a little confused to know if it had been resolved or not.
Because we've gone back and forth. First, you didn't need it because you have that space in the right-of-way, and then you needed to take that space out. So we were putting the variance back. But now you're recalculating parking based on the adaptive reuse.
I am, and I think I want to, you know, two parking spaces are required under the zoning, under zoning ordinance, but only one under the adaptive reuse provision. So if we're following the adaptive reuse regulations, four for the for the residential, four for the 1,000 square feet of commercial space, that's eight. We show 10 on the site plan. We, Ashley, you're absolutely right. We talked about going out, and then we thought maybe you had to go back in. So a little bit of confusion on that point.
Right, and Mr. Fairhurst also was a little concerned about a retaining wall. But you're not, you're not proposing to do anything to you're leaving that alone.
Right, in our newest plan, the the right-of-way area, which is, you know, where the retaining wall is, nothing's being proposed for that 20 feet. We're not touching anything.
Okay, excellent. Now I'm going to ask Ashley to answer Mr. Fairhurst's question about square footage.
So if I understand you correctly, you're asking about if there is a minimum size that a commercial business has to occupy?
Right, and is there any other accoutrements that need to be in it to call it a commercial operation?
So there's nothing in the zoning ordinance that says that a certain that a certain type of business has to be a certain size in the zoning ordinance? If there are requirements for businesses for code operation or some other requirement for permitting that wouldn't be in the zoning ordinance that might regulate a size? But whatever size they're providing for commercial space, it will have to be occupiable by whatever the business is that proposes to to live there.
Okay.
And they would have to, you know, they, obviously, if the space is not workable for the business, they're not going to occupy it. So it would have to, but there's not, there's no regulatory language in the zoning ordinance that sets a minimum for anything.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And does our consulting engineer have any comments on 331?
Sure. Would you like me to make those from here, or should I step up?
Why don't you step up to the podium and refresh our memory on your name?
Sure. So I'm Jim Reardon. I'm from Weston and Sampson. And as you mentioned, I'm standing in for Nate Michael.
Right.
Okay, so we had, we had four main comments. One of them had to do with the pre and the post-stormwater calculations, and in particular, the 100-year event. And so that information was absent from the materials that we reviewed. There is a an infiltration pipe that is shown, or at least it's implied to be an infiltration pipe. It doesn't indicate perforations in it. So, you know, if it's a solid pipe, obviously, it couldn't, it couldn't do infiltration. So that should be updated. There was no narrative for water quality or the peak flow, and that's something that's required by your zoning ordinance. So that should be included. For the infiltration that is proposed at the site, there are no test pits, so no test pit data associated with that. In order to make certain that that those systems can infiltrate properly, there should be test pit data. This is something that's required in the Rhode Island Stormwater Manual, which you folks have adopted in Tiverton by reference. So that's required. And then the last thing we point out is that the OWTS permit for the septic system, there's been a change in use since that was permitted. There's also been changes on the property that appear to conflict with some of the rules in the OWTS regulations. Specifically, the the parking lot is over the drain field, and the infiltration system is within 25 feet of the drain field. And again, those things would would appear not to meet the standards in the OWTS regulations. I suppose it's possible that you would bring that to the state, and they would waive those two requirements or vary them. But we wouldn't expect that to be likely. Additionally, that change of use, that's definitely something that needs to be permitted. So those were our comments.
We can make all of those comments conditions of approval tonight. So eventually, you'll have to do it, but you'll still get your permission.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
If if my colleagues would like to do that. And I'd like to ask our legal counsel, do we need to have a separate motion on the Unified Development relief issues? Okay.
Yes.
And would, Ashley, is it your recommendation that we continue to grant relief on parking even though it's probably not needed?
I mean, it's the safer
It's the safer thing to do. It can't hurt.
I would appreciate it. I would, I would, I would appreciate it if it were to be granted so that if someone has a question, it's it's
You did all the necessary requirements to get to the public hearing. You might as well close it out.
Yeah, and, and, Mr. Chairman, if I may, just one. There was the other, the modification with respect to the greater than 50% of the gross floor area for use of residential purposes as well, which you have in your action on your agenda.
I think, Mr. Garahy, that can be granted with subdivision approval as opposed to the dimensional, as opposed to the variance.
Yeah, your reg, the adaptive reuse says that if you have more than 50% residential, it needs, it needs the planning board to approve that?
Agreed. And I think the board will do that as part of its subdivision.
The Minor Land Development.
Correct, not with the dimensional variance.
Got it.
Okay, so, well, I'd like to then start out with making a motion to to approve the positive findings in Ashley's memo for Unified Development Review Dimensional Relief for the parking issue and also the north end of the property where the setback goes from 20 feet, which is required, to a little over eight feet. So so that would be my motion. And again, this is, this is based on on the positive findings that Ashley, in Ashley's memo. So we have a motion, we have a second from Bill Gerleck. Is there any discussion on on these two items of relief? Seeing none, all of those in favor? This one is unanimous. Thank you. Now, I think we're ready for a motion to approve the preliminary plan for for this project with with a condition. And the condition is that the items that Jim just discussed, based on Nathan Michael's memo of a few weeks ago. So that would be the condition. So I would make a motion to grant, to approve the preliminary plan conditional upon the items that Jim raised and and also adopt the positive findings in Ashley's memo. And further, to to authorize Ashley to approve the final plan when all of the, all of the, when the conditions and all of the legal requirements are met for final plan approval. So that would be my motion. I don't think I forgot anything.
The adaptive reuse provision, just that you're allowing greater than 50% of the gross floor area to be used for residential purposes.
To be included within the motion.
That would be included in your motion.
Okay, that's fine, yes. Okay, and we have a second from Dick. And and so we have, now we can have questions? Yes, please.
Is the, is the, is there confirmation from the North Tiverton Water District that they can provide you water?
I don't know.
Okay.
Is that water for all intended uses?
Yeah, for
Residential and commercial?
And fire suppression, all three. So I would, I would be wondering, Stu, if you would amend
Happy to amend my
amend your motion that that you'll need confirmation from the North Tiverton Water District that they can provide water. The second thing is that I don't have a problem with with our granting conditional approval with Ashley having the ability to approve the final plan as long as the physical plan doesn't change. Now, based on some of the comments that you made regarding the OWTS and the drain field, you may not be able to have this plan exactly. If the physical, if the plan needs to change, then I think it needs to come back to the planning board.
Understood.
Okay, I would, I would amend my motion then to to include both of the items that Tricia has just mentioned. So one of the conditions will be to get from North Tiverton Fire District, which is the water authority, some kind of, some kind of an indication that they can in fact provide you with all of the water needs for your project. And then the, and then the second.
If the, if any, if satisfying any of the conditions of approval change the site plan, that it will return for final before the board, and I won't do it administratively.
Can we say a material change?
A material change, a significant change, not just a tiny thing, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, if you have to reconfigure the parking lot, if you have to, if you're moving something to the right-of-way, if, you know, I mean, then we'd like to see it. Please, thank you.
Okay, we have an amended motion. We have a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, those in favor? It's unanimous. Congratulations. We won't see you again, but we're looking forward to a very nice project.
Thank you very much.
Very nice adaptive reuse of the old chapel, which is an iconic feature for those of us who have been North Tiverton. Thank you.
Thank you.
And now, moving right along on our agenda, the next item is 439 Main Road, which is in a Neighborhood Business Zone. And this is a Minor Land Development application for eight townhouse residential units, two of which are affordable. So because it has 25% affordable as opposed to market rate, it's considered a quote unquote comprehensive permit application. And it has, it has some fast-track features to it because of that. We're talking about a lot, which is just two acres. This is the old Hicks Farm and the old Hicks Farmhouse area. It's just under two acres. It has the historic farmhouse and a dilapidated barn are proposed for demolition. It was last before us, back in October 1, when Mr. Monti, who was at at the table, explained the applicant's request for three waivers, or they're now called adjustments, we used to call them waivers, from our regulation. And those three have to do with reducing the amount of open space from 50% to 14%. A reduction in, or actually, a waiving of the no-cut buffer and setback requirements and and waiving the need for public sewer for a multi-family project. There's public water on the property, but no public sewer. So there will have to be an OWTS. So I, so I would, so I would like to remind everybody that we all have a memo from Ashley dated November 5 containing 10 draft conditions of approval of preliminary plan and also containing positive findings of fact. And Ashley also recommends and supports the granting of the three waivers or adjustments, as they're now called, that Mr. Monti discussed at some length at our last meeting, public hearing back in October 1. Also, I should mention Also, I should mention that, that the, that the owner, who was sitting at the table, and please refresh my memory on your last name.
Mr. Don Lannan.
Lannan, Lannan, thank you. Mr. Lannan is the owner, and Mr. Lannan was gracious enough to host a public site visit back on October 23rd. So, so we also have a recommendation for conditions, and I don't know if we can put those up on the screen or not.
I'm working on it.
But there, there are 10. Ashley has 10, and there might be a few others.
Eleven.
Okay.
And I'm sure others will have some.
Uh-huh, okay. So, I, I think, I, I think that probably the place to start, since we've discussed everything else pretty, I think, pretty adequately going through the minutes, would be to go down, to quickly go down the, the list of, of the conditions for preliminary plan approval that Ashley has provided, and then maybe I'll open it up to a discussion of, do we need to have any more? So Ashley, you want to run down the list quickly?
Sure.
It's in the memorandum, but this is just for the benefit of the people who are watching.
Yep, so the first condition is that the applicant will preserve the three large trees adjacent to Main Road that are located within the driveway area. The applicant will install the appropriate protections for those trees during construction, and the trees will not be removed or significantly trimmed as a result of this application. Number two, the applicant will preserve the stone walls on the property to the extent practicable. The stone wall on the north side of the existing driveway shall be retained and will be rebuilt by the applicant if modifications are necessary as a result of construction. Number three, the applicant will update the site plan to show the location of any dumpsters proposed for the site. The dumpster area shall be screened with vegetation that will provide year-round screening at a height of at least four feet at installation. The open space area shall be marked with signage on the site to ensure that owners do not use the open space and that a restriction stating such shall be included in the homeowners, homeowner association documents. The site plan shall clearly, with more than just what's on there now, which is just a black outline, delineate the limits of the open space, and each deed shall contain language that indicates the prohibitions associated with the open space. The parking, number five, parking requirements for the proposed use is 12 parking spaces. The applicant is proposing to include 20 parking spaces, including the garage space for each unit, which is eight spaces. The driveway and required parking is permitted to be installed as impervious pavement or surface, and any parking that is constructed in excess of the 12 required spaces currently proposed with the eight extra parking spaces is required to be installed as pervious pavement or pavers. The maintenance of such pervious pavement, paver shall be the responsibility of the HOA and shall be included in the HOA documents. Number six, the applicant will work with the fire marshal to determine the need for a turnaround at the end of the driveway, and if a turnaround is required, the applicant will design the turnaround for the final plan. The applicant will provide a written confirmation from the fire marshal that the plans meet the specific requirements for public safety access. Number seven, the applicant will have the existing house on the property surveyed by Public Archaeology Lab or otherwise make arrangements to document the farmhouse and barn on the property prior to its demolition. A copy of the resulting report shall be provided to the Tiverton Planning Department in both electronic and paper format. Number eight, the existing conditions plan sheet shall be updated to show the stone walls, cart path, and cellar hole on the property. Number nine, the applicant will locate any snow storage areas on the site plan. Number 10, all lighting for the site will be dark sky compliant and marked on the site plans. Number 11 is an approval from the North Tiverton Water District that water can be supplied to the project.
And I'd like to call, actually, Jim Reardon, to see if he has any further suggestions for, for conditions, because we do have, we did have a, a number of issues that were raised by Nathan, and apparently they have not been addressed. I thought they had been addressed, but apparently they have not been. Jim?
Yes, thank you very much, Chairman Hardy.
So, put this in the form of conditions that Ashley can just copy.
Certainly. So, Ashley covered two of the conditions that we hadn't received feedback on or response on, and then there are two additional ones. One is that the weir detail, or the weir that is indicated in the plan view for the bio-retention system, it wasn't clear, you know, for, in the detail sheet, which, which weir was being used. There were two shown there, so we'd like clarification about which weir is being shown. And then the second thing is that the OWTS approval from Rhode Island DEM, that that ought to be received before, before full approval.
Excellent, thank you. Does anybody else have any suggestions for conditions? And I think I see Tricia Hilton.
I have the same issue as the last time. There are a number of engineering things. There's an OWTS approval that we don't have yet, as well as the issue around the fire department turnaround, which they may or may not require. So, I'm okay with, again, Ashley giving conditional approval unless any of those things require the plan to be redrawn, in which case I would suggest that the applicant come back to us.
Okay. And.
And the only other thing I, I would like to say, because there was some confusion the last time, I think any letter from North, from the North Tiverton Fire District, I think we need to make sure they know exactly the number of units, because I think the prior letter was a little off on the number of units. So, I'd like to make sure that that's clarified in any communication or correspondence we receive from North Tiverton.
I, while other people are thinking of possible conditions, I have, I have at least two. The first would be to remove the trailer. There's a broken-down trailer on the property that we all saw during the site visit. To remove that and any other inoperative vehicles, motor vehicles, or boats, and I think I spotted a couple in the very southwest corner that you can see from Main Road. So, remove those. That's a pretty standard condition that we always cite. Also, I went through our subdivision regulations on conservation development, and an open space management plan is required. So I think that that need, that we need to see an open space management plan, and that might be part of the condominium declaration document. I don't know where, I don't know where that would go. Maybe Ashley, you can talk to Ashley about where that would be. But we do need to have a management plan, and by the way, the Open Space Commission is happy to work with you on, on, on an open space management plan. In fact, they, they actually encourage it, so, and they might do all the work for you. So, yes, Tricia?
When you're done, I have one more.
And I have, I still have a little heartburn about the parking. I, I think that we're trying to, working, there's another committee in town that is looking just at the north end of town, and what we can do to revitalize that, and a big part of the revitalization is the improvement of the appearance of North Tiverton, so that we attract the kind of businesses that we really want, not marginal businesses, not auto repair. And I think excessive parking is something that we need to be concerned about. But if no one else agrees with me, I will accept what Ashley has already recommended, that, that we, I believe you're, you're saying that if they go as much as 20 parking spaces, only 12 are required. So, so do you really need more than 12? Do you really need 20?
Stu, I have a question.
Yeah.
Does 20 include the eight that are part of the garage?
It is, yeah, so it's 20.
So it's really only a net 12, like, for whatever.
Yeah.
The other eight are the garages, so to speak.
Okay. Okay, I'll, let's just leave Ashley. So, I, I only have two suggested conditions, having to do with the junk removal and, and the open space plan. I will withdraw any, any concerns about parking, but I think that Tricia has a.
I do have one other thing I had forgotten, I made a note for myself. When you were here last, and I know that you've done what you can about the massing and trying to make this look New Englandish, I did ask whether or not you consider putting either muntens or half muntens in, in either the, the, the street-facing windows, whether it's a complete mutton pattern of upper or lower, or just a, you know, lowers or something. And we do have some design standards on Main Road, I think that would go a long way. I don't know how the best rest of the board feels, but I think that small architectural detail would be a nice addition and be in keeping with the design standards that we have for Main Road, and make the building look a little less contemporary and a little more.
Right, particularly since we're removing a very historic building. So I would support Tricia on that. I, I see nods around the table, so I think everybody's agreeing to that. Okay, that's fine.
Thank you.
So, does anybody have anything else? If not, I think we're ready to go on with some voting.
Stu?
Yes.
I just have a question about the three trees. Have they been looked at as to, are they healthy? Are they invasive? Are, is there something else that could be more appropriate? Because it seems like we're kind of tying our, his hands as far as those three trees go very early in the project.
We, we did look at them.
What about all the other trees on the lot? I mean, why are we just zeroing in on that?
I, I believe because, because they are very highly visible from Main Road, and they're, we did take a look at them, at least I did, at the site, on the site visit, and they're all, they're all very mature, and they're in, they appear to be in very good condition. So all we're talking about now is just, it, it's just moving, the, the driveway is going to move anyhow.
Excuse me, go further. So those trees, have they been looked at by, you know, an arborist or somebody, or is it just our opinion?
Need an arborist.
Plus, they're shown, they're outside of the line of destruction.
And that applicant has no problem keeping those, those trees?
And we have voted on the.
Yeah, no, I was just questioning our own. Dr. McLairster, so to speak.
I have, and I have another housekeeping item, and I didn't get to see, and thank you for the time you spent with us on the site visit, but there is, needs to be permanent bounds put in there. Miss, poor Mr. Lannan didn't know where his property line was to the south, so, I mean, I'd like to see that be put on there. And in the site plan, as far, in whatever's recorded in final, since we don't usually see it, that it be annotated on the site plan, and also the abutter to the south. I believe that's still Hicks property, but make sure it's clarified, because it's not there. And the title block should also be very descriptive, so the MyLaws got to be recorded. So, just make sure that, you know, down the road in 20 years, when I'm dead, that somebody may look at the, the site plan.
So, I'd like to ask legal counsel if we should have a separate motion on the three adjustments that are being requested, or if that can go into a motion that will be bundled up with everything.
I think you can ad- ad- really amend Ashley's memorandum to incorporate those changes, but I think Bill has something.
Yeah, just on the point of the trees, just, can we, can we just perhaps update the language to make sure that we're preserving the three large trees adjacent to Main Road that are located within the driveway area, so long as they are healthy and vigorous or whatever, like, we don't want to, I wasn't there on the site visit, but I think it would not be wise to save trees that may be damaged or not healthy, just, let's just make sure we're saving them.
Yeah, okay, we can, Ashley can put some language in.
Well, my, the first thing that comes to my mind when we talk of, and I'm not opposed to it, I just want to make sure we put in the language in a, in a way that's clear, because the first thing that I think of is who's making that decision, because I'm not an arborist. I would say.
But the town, the town has glass eye.
We have a tree warden.
We have a tree warden.
They have a tree.
John Manchester.
No.
No.
Frank. Frank Ramus.
We have one.
Okay, so, as long as we have a mechanism.
That role is the arbiter of health and vitality.
So, so, so I think if you, that the trees, that the trees, that the tree should be maintained and saved and not be, and not be removed without approval, not be removed for disease or sickness without the approval of the tree warden, because I think the applicant wants to save the trees, right? I mean, they're beautiful, they're beautiful maple trees, like, you know.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, so the applicant is on board with all of the conditions that have been proposed, excepting one of them. So we would like to request a minor adjustment to condition number five relative to making some of the parking spaces pervious pavers or pavement solely for the reason that it creates additional expense to the future owners of the condominium unit project. So, these are going to be sold to folks, and there's going to be a condominium, and then they're going to have an extra expense in their monthly condominium fees to maintain those pavers in a unique way, and we're not sure it really moves the overall needle in, in terms of environmental impact. So, if the board is amenable, we would request that that be a moved condition for that particular reason.
I, I would oppose that. I, I think that we're seeing more and more of these pervious pavers being used, and this is a sensitive, a sensitive area because of the pollution in the Tiverton portion of Mount Hope Bay. And we do have, RITM and CRMC have a TMDL plan to, to reduce, to reduce pollution in Mount Hope Bay. And the town of Tiverton has also been given recommendations for low-impact development. There are 76 recommendations that were, that have been given to the town based on a state-formatted questionnaire, and a lot of those have to do with polluted runoff. So, I, I think, I'm going to, I'm going to continue to encourage developers to start looking at pervious pavers, and I think what Ashley has suggested here is a reasonable compromise, where you can, you can get out the asphalt and use that for the usual, but when, when you're asking for additional parking, I think that I, I think the planning board would be remiss if we didn't ask you to do pervious pavers. That's just my own view. Does everybody agree with that? I see no disagreement.
Mr. Monty, I'd also say that you could ask for a modification, probably a minor modification, to the plans should improve economically feasible.
We'll agree with you.
Okay, I think we're ready to make a motion, but again, should, should it be two motions where we separate out the, the three adjustments, as they're now called, or waivers? Okay. Okay, oh yes, you already answered that. We're going to just package everything together.
Zoning is separate, but this is all subdivision that you're doing here.
Yep, okay. So I will, I will make a motion then to approve the, the, conditionally approve the preliminary plan so that, and adopt the positive findings in Ashley's memo, and also adopt the three, or approve the three waivers or adjustments that have been requested with respect to open space being diminished to 14%, with respect to the vegetative buffering, and the third item...
Two of them are for buffering and one is for not open space.
Buffering, one is for the open space, and, and also the need to allow them to have multifamily units on a lot that doesn't have public sewer. So that's the, that would be the other thing. And so, and we have, I don't need to reiterate the conditions, do I?
I can summarize them quickly, which is part of it.
Summarize them quickly, yep.
So we're going to add language to condition number one about the removal of the trees, unless it is determined by the town of Tiverton tree warden that the trees are sick, diseased, and not worthy of preservation. And then we're going to add condition number 11, which is approval from the North Tiverton Water District that water can be supplied to the project with the correct number of residential units per the submitted site plans. Number 12 is to address any outstanding engineering comments, specifically the details for the weir and the bioretention system, and the submission of an approved OWTS prior to a final approval. Number 13 is the removal of the trailer and any other inoperative motor vehicles or boats from the party, from the property as part of the development. Number 14 is to provide an open space management plan. And number 15 is to include windows on the windows facing Main Road.
Excellent, thank you, Ashley. So that's going to be incorporated into my motion as well. So I think we've covered all of the bases.
I've got, I've got one. Is there anything that permits the house from being demolished before...
No. A demolition permit has already been issued.
I know, I know the demolition permit.
Wait, hold on, just hold on, procedural, all right? Stu's making a motion, let's get a second. Is that your whole motion?
That's, that's my motion. So we do, we do need a second, and then we can have a discussion. We have a second from Bill Gerlach. And so, Dick, you were saying, is there anything? Believe me, some people in this room have given a lot of thought about ways, and have actually talked to the applicant about attempting to preserve the building and adaptive reuse of the building, but, but absent, absent historic district zoning, and even with historic district zoning, a building can be taken down. A new building can be put back up, that doesn't fit the zone, but, you know, so unfortunately, we cannot do anything. I feel bad about it, too.
Yeah, once it's gone, it's gone.
Once it's gone, it's gone. I feel bad about it, too.
I mean, and we received four or five letters...
Yeah, I know.
From people, we got quite a bit of feedback.
Yep. Yep. But, but state law does not give the towns many, many opportunities and many options. So we, okay, we have a motion, a second, we're having...
Other comment allowed?
Yeah, no, we're still having a discuss... You know, since it, since it's...
Go to the place, too.
Since, since we're doing pretty good on time, I will, Renee, Renee Jones is chairman of the Economic Development Commission, and Renee has actually, I believe, met with Mr. Lannan.
I have met with John, and I'm still, I haven't given up, Mr. Lannan. I haven't given up, because I think there is a way to preserve the old house if it could be used. It's in a mixed-use, mixed-commercial zone, and I suggested that, in fact, what he could do is make it a commercial entity in the bottom half and then another residence in the top. And that would preserve the house, give him another unit, give him a rental unit for a commercial property. I know there are no, I know there are no laws that will help me with this. It's just that this house was built before the Revolutionary War. This house has been on Main Road since before the Revolutionary War. It is one of the few homes in North Tiverton that is from that era. And we lose them one by one by one, and when they're gone, they're gone. And as much as I understand that it's a financial decision, I would like Mr. Lannan to please think again about some of the alternatives we've talked about and how you could creatively use this house so that we could preserve something of Tiverton's history, since before the Revolutionary War. Just remember that. Thank you.
Thank you, Renee. So seeing no further comments, I think we're ready to have a vote. Those in favor of the motion as amended? Okay, I think we're unanimous. Thank you very much, and we will, we will, we wish you the best. So that brings us to 1710 Eagleville Road. And this is a property that's roughly a 33-acre lot on the north side of Eagleville Road in an industrial zone, part of which is also in the waterfront of the Stafford Pond waterfront. Mr. Brannon is here, he's the owner, and Tom Principi did the engineering that we have seen. Ashley, well, let me just say that the applicant, Mr. Brannon, is seeking to build a 2,250-square-foot garage with bathroom. This is an accessory building to an existing building on the property. And this would require a dimensional relief under Unified Development Review, because it extends the maximum square footage, which is 864 square feet. So Ashley has also provided us a memo with the facts of the application, together with draft positive findings on dimensional variance that's being requested, and also positive findings on the minor land development approval, minor, with approval, with minor conditions, with a minor condition. And that, I think the only condition is the waiving of any fees due to the delays that the applicant has already gone through because of Town Hall getting shuffled back and forth in Town Hall. So I don't think, I mean, the applicant is here, but we know what he's proposing to It's quite a substantial increase in the size of the accessory building, but it is in an industrial zone, and I don't believe it will be visible from Eagleville Road. Perhaps a little bit in the winter, but it seems to be pretty far back. And there's a tree belt between it and Eagleville Road. So I don't know that, I mean, I think that this is probably a fairly straightforward, easy approval. Does anybody have any comments or questions?
I do. Where's the site plan, Tom?
The site plan was submitted electronically in our progress.
All I have, I don't get the electronic, but I have a E R S C plan. What is that? Is, I think I know what it is.
It's soil erosion sanitation control.
Okay. And I have an onsite wastewater OWTS plan.
So that's the D E M permit statement that we have.
Okay. But I don't have a site plan.
The E R C is a site plan. So there's probably semantics that need to change.
Not semantic, according to checklist.
Well, it's just based on soil erosion.
And the title block.
Yeah. Rick Rogers likes the title block.
What?
He likes to call it E R S C.
We're planning, but we're not DPW. You know us, Tom.
Whatever you want.
You know it.
You tell me, when you change mine.
I mean, the adjacent, we have an abutters list, but we're supposed to have the site plan with all of the detail on that, too, existing.
Would you like that to be made a condition?
Absolutely.
Okay.
To follow the, to follow the checklist.
We have a second condition.
I mean, we've given Tom a lot of business.
Any other comments or questions or suggested conditions? In that case, I guess we're ready for a motion. And again, can we do just one motion that would, that would, no, because this one, this is, so we, so I will, I will make two motions. I will make a motion that we grant, that we grant the, that we grant the dimensional variance on the accessory building, which is a garage, under Unified Development Review. So that would be my motion. Do I have a second on that?
You're incorporating the memorandum from Ashley's suite?
And I am, I am, I am incorporating the memorandum and the, and the positive findings of fact that she made on that dimensional relief.
Second.
So we have a motion, a second from Bill Gerlach. Do we have any further discussion?
Question.
See, we have a question from...
Discussion after you. Okay, I have a question. What type of business is this?
I have excavation business.
Excavation, okay.
For subject systems.
I did drive-through, so I, you know, was curious, seeing all, everything that's going on Eagleville Road, I don't go that way too often.
Yeah.
So, okay.
Okay.
The other thing is, in Ashley's memo, there's, are we agreeing with that? There's a recommendation about giving back some money and...
You're only doing the variance right now, Rosemary.
Okay, okay. My discussion would be with the variance.
Okay.
I mean, after the variance.
We'll do that, okay. So here are no further discussion on this, on the variance. Those in favor, raise their hand. And I see, I don't see Janice. Oh, okay, I do see Janice. It's unanimous. Okay, now, the second motion, well, to be to approve the minor land development with two conditions, the waiver of the fee and, and the fact that Tom Principi will now be producing a site plan. And those are the only two conditions. So I would make a motion to approve with those conditions and, and to grant Ashley discretion to go ahead. Well, actually, this is the final plan, I guess, that we're approving right now, isn't it?
No, this is the preliminary plan.
This is the preliminary plan.
My statute has changed anyways.
But the statute changed, and final is automatically administrative unless there is a change from preliminary.
Okay, that's right. Okay, so we don't need to add that.
We don't need to add it.
We don't need to add that to the motion, because you already have that authority.
Yes.
So, once we approve tonight, then Ashley can take it from there, and you don't have to return now. Wait until, I've made my motion, but I need a second, and then we can have a discussion. Do I see a second from somebody?
Bill's seconded it.
I think Bill Gerlach has seconded it. So now we can have a discussion.
How much are we talking about?
Not, not a lot, a couple hundred dollars, I think. I can look it up quickly.
One million?
He, that would be nice.
Take whatever you can.
I, I don't, I don't have an exactly, I can, if you give me a minute, I can get it for you.
So this is...
But it's a few hundred dollars.
This is just a courtesy, because apparently Mr....
There was some bouncing back and forth that shouldn't have happened, and there's not much more we can do. That's the only thing that you really have authority over to.
Right.
I don't know where they are in here.
Well, Ashley's looking this up. How long a delay was this, just out of curiosity?
How long was the delay?
Yeah, going back and forth in Town Hall before you...
A couple months, two months, three months, two months, August, September, October.
Yeah.
Where are the...
Don't know, is it matter of customer service if it was our error? I'm inclined not to worry about what...
It was our, it was our...
In the, in the interest of time...
It was the collective our error.
I'm, I'm going to ask Rosemary to, to withdraw her request for the exact number. We know it's somewhere in the vicinity of a couple hundred dollars.
Yes.
It's just a question.
Yeah, no, there's no clear section on fees, so it's embedded somewhere else, and I'm just looking for it.
It's usually on the checklist, but that's okay.
Okay, so I, I think you don't have to look for it anymore. I think this is, this is really getting into minutia. So let's call, so I'm going to call the question. All of those in favor? Okay, good, okay.
Mr. Chairman and the board, thank you.
Good luck, good luck.
Good luck, best wishes.
Okay, so that brings us to our last application, which is McNeil Lima.
Oh, that's D E M.
And this has to do with moving a common lot line on Fogland Road, number 148 and number 184 Fogland Road. And this would make one lot, Lot 108, smaller, and Lot 109 larger by about 9,000 square feet. So that would be plat 805 lots 108 and 109. And I believe that the whole purpose of this, and I, I see, I see Mr. McNeil and Connie Lima, the whole purpose of this is just to make sure, is just to put the driveway, you know, have the owner be able to actually own the land at the driveway, which is now an access easement or a right-of-way. So it makes all the sense in the world to do this. And we've got, so there is, however, both lots are pre-existing non-conforming. So when you change the lot line, you've got some, some dimensional relief issues that come up. And I see Don Madeiras is the civil engineer, but Ashley has provided us with a memo on this, and, and he, and she is making positive draft findings of fact for Unified Development Relief. So, so there will be two items, and I'll let Mr. Madeiras explain what they are. And I think, Todd, doesn't, doesn't Mr. Madeiras have to do testimony, actually make testimony? Because this is, this would be...
He's testifying on behalf of the applicant?
Yeah.
If you're going to be taking testimony other than his just presenting what the site plans are, I can swear a minute if you'd like.
Well, no, I was just asking, let's keep this as simple as possible. I was just asking if he did, did you need to do that, or, because again, we'll have to make two motions on this, correct?
It's variance standing.
So we're granting the, we'll grant the variance, and then we'll grant the, what is now a minor subdivision, right? Correct?
Correct.
So, so Don, why don't you explain what the two variances are that are needed because of the...
You're right, Stu. So, Mr. Madeiras, raise your right hand. Do you swear to affirm that the testimony you shall give to this board in this matter shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, and that this is your solemn affirmation?
I do.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The variances required, look, just a, I've got a second, so we have two lots owned by the... The variances required, just a, I've got a second, so we have two lots owned by the McNeils. One is basically two thirds of an acre, the other is basically two acres. The larger two acre lot was created at the time when the R-80 zone was in effect, so it was made, it was created to comply. We now know the zone's been changed to 120. So the, basically, the variances we need is to make 108, the larger two acre lot, smaller in area by about 10,000 square feet. Another variance to make the large lot 108 to have less than the minimum required lot width. The minimum required lot width is 200 feet. We're proposing 146 feet, more or less. And the last variance for the big lot 108 is to have less than the minimum required side building setbacks. Basically, we're making the lot line, the new lot line goes around an existing barn on Lot 108, so we're basically coming up with a 15.4 foot setback going westerly and an 18 foot setback going basically north, northwesterly. So those are, those are the three variances.
Thank you. So I think we're, we're probably ready to make a motion to approve those three variances. And Ashley has provided us with positive findings on those variances and, in, in her memo. So again, that would be, so, so that would be Lot 108, where 74,257 square feet is proposed, and Lot 109, where 40,055 square feet is proposed, and an application, and a dimensional variance for the proposed side yard setback of the accessory structure barn of 19.6 feet, where 35 feet is required, with a proposed side yard setback of 15.4 feet. So I would make that motion based on the testimony that we have just heard from Mr. Maderas, and based on the positive findings of fact in Ashley's memo.
Second.
Do I have a second? I have a second from Tricia. Any further discussion on that? Seeing no further discussion, those in favor? Unanimous, I believe. Yes, unanimous. Okay, now, we would, we need a motion to approve, to approve a minor subdivision.
Administrative subdivision? It's a minor subdivision because an administrative subdivision that's denied, which is basically what I had to do because it needed dimensional relief, gets filed as a minor under state law.
Right. And, and this will only be a one-step process. There's no preliminary and final here, right?
There is.
Okay, so what we would be doing is, we would be approving preliminary minor subdivision, and, and then Ashley would then have the authority to go ahead and, and approve the final plan administratively.
Correct.
Whenever, when all of the information, when all of the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted. So I would make a motion then to, to approve preliminary plan for this minor subdivision. And again, we're talking about AP 805 lots 108 and 109 at, at 184 Fogland Road, basically.
Second.
So I have a motion, I have a second from Tricia Hilton. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all of those in favor? Okay, unanimous again. Good luck.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. So for the final approval, which is administrative, the only thing we need to do is to set the proposed monuments and provide a Mylar original and prints for recording?
You need, you need to submit an application for final with a, with a copy of the plan set. You can give us like one paper and one electronic. We have to review it and certify it. Once it's certified complete, then you can print a Mylar for a recording. So the, the final plan will need to reflect the conditions of approval plus the checklist with an understanding that there's going to be checklist items, just like with the preliminary plan, that don't apply to your application because you're just moving a lot line. So just submit, submit it with the checklist with those items marked as NA, and we'll take it from there.
So, but I mean, there are no conditions of approval that I heard, so?
No.
There were three on the memo.
Oh, there were?
Oh, we missed one.
Yep, we'll get you a copy. I'll, I can read, read them, but that we just, I want to make sure that there's a note on the plan that Lot 109 is granting access because you're moving, like, they still have to use the driveway to get to the barn. At least, that's what it looks like. You don't use that driveway to get to the barn. Somebody uses, it looks like somebody uses the driveway to get to the barn. So the owner of the barn, which is 108, has to have the ability to pass and repass. You have, they have to have, you know, they have to have an easement, basically, to use the driveway to get to the barn. So we want to see that that's done. And then there's, I asked for an updated plan showing the building envelope for each parcel and included, including the measurement of the lot width at the front setback. So you can't, I didn't see that on the plan.
Oh, yeah, it's in the?
But I, but the, the actual building envelope.
Okay.
Just show the envelope on the plan with that measurement that shows that lot width difference so that it's clear where that came from. And then with the final, the electronic submission that you provide should match the paper copy, including being signed. Because the paper, the electronic version that I saw was not a signed copy. The, both the paper and the electronic version should match and should be signed copies. Those were the three conditions.
Okay, great. Thank you. Could I, could I raise a question on the first condition? On the, again, what we're trying to do is make these rational pieces of property. That's all we're trying to do. And so with the, with the house over here, oh, here, so this is the, it went away. This is the existing way to go to the barn. Now, that was there for Pete, that I'm to bring his combines up there. Okay, and I use it to pack my deliveries in there. But it's conceivable that, I mean, this is the driveway here that they give the look here and around it. That's why we have this space right here.
So if that's the intent, then I would show that on the plan because what it looks like now is that they're moving the lot line and essentially cutting off your access to the barn. Once they move that lot line, the driveway leaves your property and goes to their property, which means you're essentially trespassing when you're driving on their driveway to get to the barn. If your intent is to not use that driveway, then show your, show your intended access so that the site plan is clearly showing that we don't need to make you, you use an easement for that driveway. You're establishing new access to the barn. And if that's the case, we can amend the condition to simply state unless the applicant shows the intent to, to, you know, have new access to the barn.
Alternative access.
With, on its own property.
So my question would be, is, can that be done in a note, which would say access to the barn will be over Lot 108 and not over the other lot?
Yeah, that's fine.
I don't want to show something?
That's fine.
That just seems?
I understand, that's fine. I just want to make sure that the site plans clearly reflect that they have access to the barn either through an easement or on, you note on the plan, they will not use the driveway for access to the barn, they'll be establishing access within their own property. That's fine.
Yeah, great. Great.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So that brings us to Planning Board Business, which is item number seven on the agenda. And we have already approved A, 7A, and 7B, which, which will, which is a positive recommendation to Town Council. And I note a, an error on the agenda. There are actually two Bs, two 7Bs. So the 7B that is entitled Architectural Design Standards for Waterfront W2 Zone, that should actually be a C rather than a B. And then everything else changes one letter on the agenda. So we, Todd, we did not include architectural design standards for waterfront two in our, did we, in our, in our earlier motions?
We did not.
So what would you like to do here? What do we need to do in order to attach some architectural design standards to the W2 district?
I think these were going to be part of your subdivision regulations.
They are.
Right?
Yes.
So if you want it to be part of the subdivision regulations, you have to have a final draft, public hearing to record, to adopt them as such.
So we're in the, we're in the process of working on a draft. I have a meeting this week to go over the, the format of that so that we can finish filling in the content. But we're actively working on drafting that section of the subdivision regulations.
Okay, so we don't really need to do anything tonight?
Correct.
This is a work in?
You can continue it. I would think by then we should be, we will have a, I'm hoping that for next month, we can have a draft for you to be reviewing, and then you can decide how much editing is needed and when, when you'd want to push that to public.
Okay, then, then let's continue this item to our December 3 meeting. And that brings us to what is, what used to be called C and is now D, Discussion and Recommendation to the Town Council Regarding Engaging a Monitoring Agent for Low and Moderate-Income Mobile Home Units. And I think this is something that Tricia and Jay Edwards were looking into to make sure that we're getting all of the credit for, for the, for these, well, for certain, I guess, trailers, mobile homes that would, that do, under state law, qualify as affordable. So, I don't know, Tricia, since Jay isn't here, maybe you can?
So, yes, so the General Assembly changed the law, which now allows the community to, to receive a half a unit credit for mobile homes that meet certain criteria. There's an age of construction, and they have to have a certain sort of, it's some sort of federal health and safety sticker. I'm not phrasing it the right way. And they need to be on land that's either owned by the owner of the mobile home or on land that's owned by an HOA. However, we have a number of mobile homes in this community that would meet that criteria. And as you know, when we see comprehensive permits, we're somewhere around about 5% right now, maybe a little bit over, but in terms of our affordable housing achievement. So these would all count, and they would go towards our affordable housing achievement. The thing is, in order to do that, and Jay did a great job and worked with the tax assessor and polled all the units that would qualify, and we went through all of them. In order for them to be counted, however, you need a monitoring agent. And by the way, just to make this clear, these do not become deed restricted. These, the home, the, the mobile homeowner doesn't do anything, it's not deed restricted, they don't sign anything. It's simply that we're allowed to receive credit for them. So I spoke with Amy Renone at Rhode Island Housing, and she said, this is a really new program. And there are a small number of agencies that are accredited as monitoring agents, but she put me in touch with one in particular, a woman by the name of Melina Lodge, who I guess actually helped write this bill and is the only one so far that has any experience doing this. Just to get an idea of what this would all cost, she thought that maybe, you know, kind of just ballpark-ish, it might be about $2,500 to engage her, her, an organization as the monitoring agent. And basically, they'd come down, they'd inventory these things, confirm that they meet all the criteria, and then they would report them back to Rhode Island Housing. But there's then, you know, for a small fee, an ongoing monitoring program. So I think it's well worthwhile for the town to pursue this. It's going to take a little bit of funding, so the, the question is, should we recommend to the Town Council that they engage a monitoring agent to, you know, have these units identified and then potentially counted towards our affordable housing stock?
Seems like a good idea.
So there's a?
Do we have to go on the RFP, or just because?
Not at $2,500, they don't have to.
So there's a, a couple of things I just want to clarify so that it's, because it can get confusing in the language, and I think part of the, the confusion is the fact that we're, when we're talking about mobile homes and manufactured homes, we're essentially talking about the same thing. The differ, the difference is the, is the, basically, the year. So I think it's, don't quote me on the year, I think it's 1968. But I think, so anything that's before that is a mobile home. Everything after that is a manufactured home. They're essentially, it's the same concept. It's the, it sits on a chassis, it can be brought in, it, but it, in order for it to qualify as a manufactured home, it has to be designed to sit on a permanent foundation. It doesn't have to sit on a permanent foundation, but it has to be, it has to be able to be put onto a permanent foundation so that you're not, this is not the, you know, recreational vehicle that you can drive, and this is not the camper that you can tow. This is a unit that's specifically designed to sit on a permanent foundation, although in a, in a manufactured home park or even anywhere on a single-family lot, you, you don't have to mount it on a foundation, but that is a differentiating factor. So when we're saying mobile home, the correct terminology now is manufactured home, which is different than a modular home. So I don't want anyone to not know the terminology well enough to not understand exactly what we're talking about.
And all of that jives with the definitions we just?
Yes, because we took those from the, from the state definition.
Right.
The other thing to remember is that when you get to count these units, they count as half units, they don't count as full units. The other part of the law that was changed related to manufactured homes was to say that manufactured homes are essentially permitted by right because a lot, some municipalities essentially prohibit a new, I'll say, mobile home park or manufactured home park. But what that law did was make it a permitted use by right. If I have a single, just a single-family house lot, that I can put a manufactured home on that lot, that the municipalities can no longer prohibit that from happening, and that if somebody does that, we would get to count that as a half, half unit.
So I would, I would invite Tricia to make a motion.
Can I ask a question before Ashley finishes? The tongue and the wheels have to be taken off, right, and put on the slab?
It does not have to be put on the slab.
Okay, no, I'm sorry.
It has to be able to be put on a slab.
Able to.
But it, there's no requirement in the law for, in order for it to be counted, that it actually has to be placed on that slab.
So Country View Estates, would they be?
No.
Would we get credit?
Country View, Country View, the units themselves would meet all the criteria. The problem is that Country View, the, the land is owned by, by a corporate entity, not a homeowners association or individual. And there are, to Ashley's point, there are some units that could be counted and that are not part of a? that are not part of a, a park or a community. They just happen to meet the criteria on their own, um, on their own piece of land.
They got in before the ordinance was in effect.
And the, the other thing to remember is that in, in the, in the parks that are owner, uh, like that are owned by the, the people that live there, um, that if you have units that don't qualify for, for this under the law in terms of counting as a half unit, because they are technically a mobile home, home, which is something that pred, and again, don't quote me on this date, but I believe it's predating 1968, that there are programs available and the town could potentially look at programs as well for replacements so that if that unit is replaced with a manufactured home, you'd get a half credit for that.
A full credit?
Some should be.
Well, because, because the program-
Uh, the program will deed restrict it.
Program will deed restrict it, so you would get a-
You'd get a full credit.
You'd get a full credit.
So are you saying that the manufactured homes in Country View don't count to this?
No, because in order to count, the, the land that the, that the unit sits on has to either be owned individually by the same person who owns the unit, like this is my lot and this is my manufactured home, mobile home. Or it had, the land has to be collectively owned by a homeowners association.
So there's all of those rules.
So I think we're ready for a motion.
So anyways, I, I would make a motion and I'm happy to work with Ashley and Todd to write something up to bring a recommendation to the council that they, uh, consider engaging a monitoring agent, uh, to inventory and enroll, um, mobile manufactured homes that qualify into the affordable housing program.
My second then. Um, any further discussion? Seeing none, hearing none, those in favor are unanimous. Okay, so that brings us to, um, what was D and is now E, Discussion and Possible Vote with regard to engaging specialized consulting hydrology engineer for the planning board. Um, and Tricia, did you want to speak to this one as well?
Sure. Um, so as far as municipal water goes, I think everybody knows that Ashley's firm is working with the fire districts um, to develop hydrology models and be able to, you know, figure out exactly how much municipal water there is available or not available. I think going forward though, um, it would be helpful for us, especially because it's not entirely clear that both water districts are going to be able to provide all the information necessary to have, um, standing or on call, however you want to describe it, um, water engineer who could review a submission from North Tiverton or from Stonebridge based on the information that's available and tell us whether or not, just like what Nathan does for us now in terms of civil engineering. So that's one thing because, you know, water's gonna, I mean, that's the, that's the, gonna be the big thing here. So if we have somebody that represents us, that works for us, that looks at these, um, that looks at these reports, that looks at what an applicant hands in and says, yes, this is going to work or, you know, I have real concerns that this is not going to work. So that's one piece of it. And Ashley's firm, I think, has people that do that. The second piece of it is a little more complicated and I'm not entirely sure where we get this person. Maybe it's Ashley's firm, but it might be the University of Rhode Island. For development in parts of town where we don't have public water, we're going to have applicants coming forward with proposals for wells. And we may start to get proposals for larger wells instead of individual house wells. And most of you know this, but for people who don't in Rhode Island, the way the law works is that whatever water you can take out of the ground on your property is your water. And if it dewater your neighbor and runs your neighbor's well dry or, or runs your whole neighborhood dry, it doesn't matter. There's no recourse for you whatsoever. So it's really important that we find a way to find someone who can help us determine what kind of testing and evaluation we might be considered doing in places where we may get a bigger development and they're going to need groundwater or somebody wants to put in a really big well. I know that, I think it's West Greenwich, but it could be Coventry, has, for example, in their language, the ability to require additional well tests above and beyond the sort of standard, you know, testing that we require now. Um, and, you know, thi- this is definitely something that we're going to be looking at. Again, Ashley's firm may have somebody that does this kind of work. I do know there are people at URI, professors at URI who do consulting on hydrology. As a matter of fact, Little Compton right now has a study going on um, with two professors at the University of Rhode Island and they've got like 120 wells that are enrolled in this study. They're really looking at drought conditions and salinity because they have more of a seawater problem. But the point is, um, I think that we should figure out what we need and potentially ask the council to increase that consulting money because if we make a mistake and, you know, approve a subdivision that doesn't have enough water, um, or, you know, we approve something that, you know, a big development that doesn't have enough water or dwaters, you know, a whole nother neighborhood or causes loss of pressure for half of North Tiverton, you know, we don't want to be doing that. So, um, I don't know exactly that, whether or not we need a motion or this is just a discussion of what people's thoughts are and then we come back with some proposals. I don't know, what does everybody think about this?
I mean, I, I think it's a good idea. I imagine this is ad hoc, but we're not, you know, asking it depending on, uh, if the application before us, right? Like this is not something that's on staff.
Right, no, this would be, uh, and, and only for the applications where it was required. I'm not even sure the person would, I mean, potentially if it was a, at someplace like Ashley's firm, they would just see the application and, you know, email their comments. I'm not even sure we need to have somebody.
So Tricia, just the way I understand it, is this for potentially major land developments or is this something we want to do in preparation?
I think, I think figuring out the per, the who the right people are to help us and then what the right protocol is in terms of what they would recommend for us requiring for an evaluation. That part we do upfront, but then we would be able to rely on these people if we have, you know, a situation where-
It's a tough, tough question to answer, VI, because, because there's so much knowledge that somebody has to come up to speed on to understand the two fire districts and their ability to provide water and information about their water resources.
Well, it, it seems like it's a little of both. So, I mean, I think we have some study going on. I think finding who would be the next step makes total sense. I just wanted to understand because it seemed like we were kind of asking for two potential things.
We are a little-
And it's a little bit of both, which totally, totally makes sense. Just not too much trouble tracking.
Yeah. So I don't know if the thing to do is to try and do a little more research and find out what the options are, what they might cause, who might be able to do things and come back to the board with those and then go forward from there.
That makes sense.
I mean, I'll do some work and, you know, work with Ashley and-
Is that in the pursuit of having, I'll call it, a water engineer or the planning board as a consultant?
Yeah, I think so. I think so. The question is, can we get one person who can do both, right? That's the only part I don't know is if, if groundwater hydrology is a different thing than an, an engineer that looks at hydrologic models from public water suppliers. I don't know if they're the same person or not.
I think they, they could be, but I, I can't say that-
Yeah.
-with 100% certainty.
So that, I think that's one of the things we have to figure out is can you get all that in one person?
We can ask ChatGPT or Jasper. That's the first step.
So this is, this is a work in progress. And, uh, it, it could also be something that we could discuss in terms of our budget. Every year we request a, a certain amount for budget. And we have a, you know, we, um, we get what we're given. But, you know, we could factor that in as well, so let's, but that's definitely something we should keep on our agenda, you know, for discussion.
So I'll work with Ashley and I'll do some research. And for our next meeting, we can come back with some options and what it potentially might cost us and, uh-
I mean, I will say, if you're, if you're having the person respond to a development application, that is a cost you can pass on to the, to the developer.
Yeah.
If it's not part of a development application and you're just looking for somebody to give you guidance and expertise on, on subject matter in general, then that's, that would be an expense that you would have to figure out how to cover.
Right. I think, I think for, uh, I think for, um, a municipal water application, it would be the first, right? We'd be looking for somebody to peer review something and say yes or no. I think on a groundwater thing, it might be a little bit of both where somebody says, well, first of all, if you're going to do more than this, here, you should require these tests just as, you know, as a standard, right? So there might be some things that they tell us we just have to require as a standard in terms of testing. But then you may need them to evaluate, you know, an app, an applicant's engineering report that says, oh, there's just plenty of water down there. And in that case, it could be passed on. But maybe they're the same person. All right, well, I have my assignment, I'll work on that.
Good, thank you. Um, so that brings us to the approval of minutes. Um, and we have four sets of minutes. Um, Todd, would it be possible to, um, to approve these minutes altogether? All four sets at the same time?
In theory, yes. May I ask, Janice, how many corrections she has first? Then yes.
And Rosemary?
I have a couple.
Okay.
On, on the, uh, the meeting of October 1st?
Well, let me, let me make a, let me make a motion to-
Bring it up.
Just, um, uh, to a motion, then we can have a second. Then we can discuss all of these and we'll go through, we'll, we'll go through any, um, anything that you and, and Janice has caught. So I will make a motion to approve, uh, the minutes of our September 24, 2024 meeting, um, minutes of October 1st, 2024, minutes of October 18, 2024, and minutes of our October 23, 2024. So again, two of these were, um, uh, well, one of them was a sidewalk, so it was very, it was very short. So, okay, we have a motion from me, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Dick. And now we can have a discussion. So I'm going to ask, let's just take this in order. Does anybody have corrections for the minutes of September 24, 2024? Nope. Okay, that was, those look clean. I don't think, there was anybody who had any, um, corrections for September 24. Does anybody have any corrections for October 1st?
Yes.
Okay.
Page two.
Huh?
Page two.
Uh-huh.
Uh, item number two, the first paragraph, first sentence. Um, it was not a public hearing, it was just a meeting. Ms. Hilton announced that the applicant had requested the matter to be continued to the November 12th meeting, not a public hearing. This is on Hawkins.
Okay.
And then on that same page, um, second to the last paragraph, Ms. Eva said the pa, in the past, the board's consulting engineer would go out and inspect the site being cleared.
Okay, I'm writing these down. If you, if you need, I can- Okay. Does anybody else have any corrections to October 1? Okay, nothing. Uh, does anybody have any corrections to October 18?
Except the sidewalk?
No, that, that was a special meeting.
Okay.
Um, but it was one of our zoning meetings. That wa, that was the one that went on for six hours.
Oh, I, I do, did you just, I'm sorry, Stu. I was not at the October 18th meeting? Did you bypass that one yet? I was sick that night and I-
No, we have you as absent.
Okay, but I have a question.
Yes.
Because I was trying to follow it and it wasn't recorded, so I couldn't get too much information on it. What's the status of, of, let's see, the special use? And where is the letter to the correspondence to the Town Council? We haven't been getting any copies of anything that goes to the, the Town Council and, or any other reports. That's all I have to say.
Isn't it a long page long for the 18th?
Right.
So where is that?
On the 18th. I had, I read the, the, uh, I was absent. I'm asking questions of that meeting, it was not videoed. And, um, it says that it'll be extended.
Yeah, Rosemary, I thought I sent you that memorandum that was sent to the Town Council on extending the moratorium, not moratorium, the special use.
I think you did. Thank you.
Okay. Um, okay, so, um, does anybody have any corrections for October 23? Again, this is a very short, this is the sidewalk and it's very short. I didn't see anything. Okay, so, um, with, with the two corrections um, that Rosemary has made, and I've made a note of it, if anybody, I think you probably did as well, Ashley, but, uh, um, I have it written down if you, if anybody on staff needs it, they can email me. Um, with those two corrections, uh, we have, um, we have a motion, we have a second. Um, um, so I'll amend my motion to include the two corrections. Um, and now I'll call the question. All of those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous.
I'm in favor, but I have to abstain from the sidewalk because I didn't-
I have to abstain from the 18th.
At the 18th, right, right. You can't, if you, if you're not there.
Well, abstain or it's a-
Yeah, okay, that's fine. Okay, the next item is something that, uh, I guess Denise Sarret um, called Ed's attention to and that is transferring $2,000 from Professional and Technical Services uh, to subdivision regulation amendment advertising. We're going to need, we're going to need more money for the advertising. And we're going to, um, uh-
It's on, okay.
Uh, so, uh, so that, that was a recommendation that the treasurer made and it came to Ed and then Ed passed it on to Todd. And Todd thought it was a good idea, right, Todd?
Yes.
So?
So we don't go on the red?
So let's, so, um, so now how do we, uh, what do we have to do to transfer?
Take note.
So it's, 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 it's in our power to make the transfer ourselves. We don't have to request it of Town Council. Okay, so I would make a motion then to, uh, transfer $2,000 from the Professional and Technical Services Budget Account. services budget account. And this is, and this would be the, this would be for the fiscal year that ends June 30th, 2025, to transfer that $2,000 to subdivision regulation amendment advertising. Because we're, we're going to be tackling subdivision regulations in a big way, hopefully. At least we have a contract with Ashley's firm to do that.
So moved.
So we, do we, who seconded it?
Ed. Dick.
Dick.
I said so moved, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a, a motion, a second. Those in favor? Okay, done. Okay, so that, that's all we have. I'm going to just waive the last two items because I don't think that, I think the zoning code revision committee has pretty much gone out of business.
No, we have another meeting.
You are, okay.
Thursday.
Thursday.
Oh, okay. And there's a meeting, I just, I believe, also on Thursday of the North Urban Business Park Committee, but I don't have anything to report. Would you want to say anything, Ashley? Good. So we'll, we will, I will entertain a motion, a privileged motion to adjourn.
At 9:40, I'll make that motion.